Can you hear me?
Darren, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the February 26, 2024 Board of Trustees Charles Regular Meeting. As I understand it, Mr. Calhoun will be attending by Zoom and Ms. Dr. Temple will also be trying to attempt to attend by Zoom. So we'll get the meeting under order. Before we start tonight's activities, I would ask everybody to please stand. Like to observe a moment of silence in memory of a student we lost recently, Brady James Reynolds. Brody was a 12th grade student at Wando High School. We extend our deepest condolences to his families and friends during this difficult time. Mr. Kelly, I'd like you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto item 1C of tonight's agenda. We will now consider the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
I guess so. Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, vote aye.
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 Any one against? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as written.
Quick question, are we not using board dogs?
I apologize, Mr. Calhoun. On the next one, we'll continue on, but the voice vote was fine for this one.
Thank you.
Onto the approval of the minutes. I trust that each of you have had an opportunity to review the minutes provided in advance. If there are no major objections or corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22, 2024 Board Meeting.
I still move.
My second.
We have a vote. And the motion passes. The minutes are approved as written. Onto item 1E, the approval of the February 5, 2024 Special Call Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from the February 5, Special Called Board Meeting.
My second.
We please have a vote. And the minutes are approved as written. Onto item 1F, Approval of the February 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from the February 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole.
Second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move it on to vote. And the motion passes and the minutes are approved as written. Onto item 2, Special Recognition, A School Spotlight at Black History Month Celebrations. Ms. Huggins.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. I want to thank the Communications Team for working with our school-based leader, which has prepared this spotlight on our school's celebration of Black History Month. Ms. Denny?
Somebody heard you.
So, so sorry. This is the spotlight on Black History Month from our schools.
Can you hear her now?
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
Excellent. Moving on to public comments, before I turn it over to my co-chair, I really would ask everybody to remind everyone of the importance of maintaining a respectful and inclusive environment during this portion of our meeting. We welcome diverse perspectives and opinions, and while we value the opportunity to hear from our community members, it is important to note that the public comment period is designed for constructive dialogue and input that contributes to the betterment of our community and the topics at hand. We encourage speakers to express their views respectfully and within the allotted time. Now allow Ms. Watley to explain the rules for our public comment, depending on the signup sheet.
I will call you up four at a time if you will line up at the podium and state your name before you begin your comment. The time will be dispersed equally among each person that has the opportunity to speak. I ask that you be mindful of the time as your time is drawing to the conclusion of your allotted time if you will begin to wrap it up so that everybody has an opportunity for equal time. Thank you. I am going to begin with, we have less than 30 people, so each person will get their two minutes.
It's supposed to be divided up equally, if not 30 people. So let's just, let's just give everybody two minutes.
Ms. Watley, what's the allotted time?
We're going to give everybody two minutes.
Two?
Unless, unless there's an objection.
That's fine. Thank you.
Ms. Watley, our, our policy reads that if it's less than 15, everyone gets two minutes, but if it's over 15, everyone gets one minute. We're at 17 signed up tonight.
I, I understand. So, okay, I'll count them and, and I'm okay with two minutes unless, is there any objection other than Mr. Kelly? Okay. So I'm going to begin with Reverend Cynthia Smalls, Penn Duker, Parker Usery, forgive me if I mispronounced your last name, Catherine Nagel.
Point of information real quick. Shall we move to suspend the policy?
That's correct. If we're going to, as Mr. Kelly pointed out correctly, our policy is that if it's over 15, each speaker gets one minute and to allow the two minutes for the extra additional speakers, we would have to have a motion to suspend the policy.
There are 17, Mr. Kelly, there, there are 17, 17 people. So it's literally two people that we would bring to math and divide it up with.
Understand that.
In the policy.
I'm going to go ahead and move to suspend the policy, and I think somebody just did that. And I'll second it.
I'll second it, either one of us.
All in favor, voice vote, say aye.
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 Anyone against? The motion passes. Let's go. Sorry.
Thank you, Reverend Smalls. Yes, ma'am. Go for, go ahead. Please state your name first.
Reverend Cynthia Smalls, but before you start the time, I have a question. If it's okay to ask a question.
Does anybody object? It's, it's not covered in policy, but go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Being that it's a Black History, also Lenten season, when Jesus was journeying to the cross.
It's a question?
It's, it's going to be a question coming behind it. Instead of giving us two minutes, may I take this personal point of privilege?
You, I'm sorry, ma'am.
For three minutes.
You don't have a personal point of privilege.
Three years to.
I'm going to start the clock.
Okay, okay, okay. I, I can, I can accept that.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good evening, Reverend Cynthia Lane Smalls. As it comes to this end of Black History Month, I want to take this moment to acknowledge the process that needs to be addressing. The difference between the process that Ms. Simmons went through compared to Ms. Huggins, we cannot ignore that. It is a glaring example of racism in our community. It has left, left me feeling some kind of way. Why? Why that five individuals can come out at 10:30 at night, January 22, without even disguising, don't, matter of fact, they didn't even have, they just came out the way they were and gave, handed down Ms. Huggins the superintendent role. Get it, don't get it twisted. I have no problem with Ms. Huggins. She's a wonderful person. However, when I canvassed the district, Dr. Siobhan Coakley, Dr. Joe Williams, Dr. Jennifer Swerogen right here, Dr. Jerome Davis, Dr. John, John Cobb, over 20 years plus, yet they were not afforded the opportunity to put in for this job. That's not right. You guys went in the back and came back. That, that is not right. That is racism at its best form. We have qualified doctors. How do you think they feel that they were not able to go through the process? Michelle sat there for months, months, in the infamous words of Ed Kelly, he said, what better thing is she can, she's on the job, let's give it to her. Well, Michelle's been sitting in the job for a year and a half.
Reverend Smalls, I'm going to have to interrupt you for a second. Under, under our policy, we got to stick to issues. So let's take the names, let's take the names up. You can stop it, but you, you, let's not go.
That 15 seconds before you interrupted.
Go ahead, continue.
Put 15 seconds back on the.
Please, Reverend.
So you're going to let me, okay, thank you. I'm just, I have nothing against Anita Huggins, nothing, but the process is the problem that I had. You guys have failed Charleston County School District, these doctors that have earned their titles, nobody gave it to them and handed it down like a golden child, a golden ticket. Nobody did that. They worked for their title to become doctors. Okay, you owe me three seconds, Mr. Chairman. Okay? And that's not right for you to turn the mic off.
Continue, please.
Reverend Smalls, he doesn't, we don't have control over the mic.
Please continue.
The mic is cut, excuse me, the mic is cut when you exceed 15 seconds after the two-minute mark. That's why the mic goes off.
He interrupted at 15 seconds, ma'am.
And I just explained that.
Okay, well, let me finish with 15 seconds.
After you went 15 seconds past two minutes.
The preacher voice.
Well, ma'am, it's, it's, actually, it's time to move on.
No, I have 15 seconds.
You went 15 seconds.
Okay.
Beyond the two-minute mark.
Okay, Ms. Leah, thank you so much. But I hope you five can sleep at night. I know you can sleep at night, you said it. But what y'all did was wrong.
Reverend Smalls.
Racism at its best.
Duly noted. Thank you.
But I'm going to say this, and I'm going, a Dutch and a pit. Remember that. I'll be back next month.
Hi, I'm Penn Duker. I use they, them, and he in pronouns. I'm a senior at Lucy Beckham as well as the vice chair of the Health Advisory Committee. I'm here today to address the blatant systemic racism in the hiring process, or lack thereof, of our new superintendent. Rather than conduct a search to find the best candidate for this very important job, this board decided to hire an unqualified white woman. What's worse is that this $280,000 contract was signed unilateral, unilateral, the board chair signed it by himself, disenfranchising the constituents of the eight districts he does not represent. If such blatant racism can occur without consequence at the highest level of our district, it's reasonable to assume that such behavior will incur unchecked in our schools as well. Every one of you were elected to serve the students of CCSD, not to push personal agendas. Any board member unwilling to do that should resign. Thank you.
Parker Usery, I'm a student of CCSD who left school two hours early so I could be here today in time to sign up for public comment. And I'm here to just express my disgust for the behavior of the board in the hiring of Anita Huggins. You're trying to be sneaky, adding vague items to the end of the agenda, tricking your own fellow trustees. Why would you need to be sneaky if you were following proper protocol? Clearly, you are not. You only, you not only failed to complete the process of hiring use in the past, but you also violated state law. And I will say which law that is. It is Title 59, Section 1980, in the signing of this contract. We noticed that. You think that you can get away with breaking laws quietly, but we see you. The students of CCSD see you. More people than just Penn and I care about what's going on. They're just not here because they can't leave school early to meet your ridiculous timeframe for public comment signup. I am additionally disgusted about the signing of the contract by Ms. Huggins, a choice that she made. A number of the people in the community explained to her that signing the contract was an act of complicity in the systemic racism that led to her hiring. I personally let her know that this was a slap in the face to Ms. Simmons, Dr. Galian, and all of the other more qualified potential candidates that were looked over. She pretends to care about transparency and ethics in the district, as do you. You all say that you believe in that, apparently. So the right choice should have been obvious to her. She thanked us for our input. She said she hoped that we were having a good week, and she proceeded to choose complicity. We saw that. We noticed that. That was a choice that you made. We won't stop showing up to protest this blatant violation of district procedure. Your once-a-month public comment policy will not stifle us. You will be held accountable. I'll see all of you soon.
Hi, my name is Cassie Nagel, great-grandmother of a CCSD student and a proud member of Moms for Liberty. I congratulate the board on getting these meetings under better control. However, on a YouTube of the last meeting, I noticed members of the public snapping their fingers, standing up, standing up to turn backwards to express approval, but mostly the opposite when people spoke. Do you know how intimidating that is for speakers in public, especially people like me who have a fear of public speaking? I may not be able to see the audience when I'm speaking, but now I know it goes on. Have you considered how distracting it is for speakers to have that going on beyond them, behind them? Have you considered how inconsiderate to block other people's view of the meetings and the other speakers? When you allow any kind of intimidation by one group on anyone else under your purview, it is significant. I respectfully ask that you consider a remedy to this, to create a safe space for an exchange of all opinions. Thank you.
Dr. Harry Walker, John Cable, Frank Hardy, Reverend Willette Scott Ash.
Good, good evening, Superintendent Huggins and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Dr. Harry Walker. Over the past two years, I've served on the Board of Directors at Carolina Voyager Charter School. One decade ago, I was hired to be the founding school leader of Carolina Voyager. Our school had very humble beginnings, starting with just over 50 students renting classroom space downtown at the Greek Orthodox Church on Race Street. I served as a school leader from 2014 through 2022. During that time, our student population grew to nearly 500, I'm sorry, 400 students. Much of the reason for our success and our growth has been the support of the school district and the Board of Trustees over the years. A major milestone that contributed to our growth occurred in 2016, when the Board of Trustees agreed to lease classroom space to Carolina Voyager Charter School at the St. Andrews Campus on Wapo Road. This arrangement allowed us to build our cash reserves to be in the position we find ourselves today, building our own school, or as we like to call it, our forever home. This is quite an accomplishment for a school of our size and at this relatively early point of our history. Our new 53,000 square foot building, which is located on 13 acres on Bee's Ferry Road, is nearing completion. We, we will be welcoming 414 students when we open our doors to the 2024, 2025 school year. Thanks to your leadership, school choice is alive and well in Charleston County. In this year's school choice lottery, we received 419 applications for less than 40 open seats for the coming school year. While our new campus is farther than, farther from downtown than we had hoped, our location sits in an area of the county that is booming with development. Our school currently serves 52 students from two of the most overcrowded schools in the district. As development along the Bee's Ferry corridor continues, our location will help relieve some of the inevitable need for student seats in that part of the school district. Since I retired, I'm out of time, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank you for your time this evening and thank you in advance for your continued support of Carolina Voyager Charter School.
Hello, my name is John Cable, the school leader of Carolina Voyager, and this is Leslie Atkins, our school assistant principal. We stand before you today to advocate for the renewal of our charter, of our beloved Carolina Voyager with CCSD. We greatly value our relationship and hope to continue to serve the students of Charleston County with your continued support, growing and strengthening our partnership each year. One of the most remarkable aspects of Carolina Voyager is its ability to cater to the diverse needs of our community. Whether a student is gifted and seeking advanced challenges, struggling and in need of extra support, or simply looking for a flexible learning environment, Carolina Voyager is there to meet them where they are. Our unique offerings include a small community, options for families from kindergarten through eighth grade with only two classes per grade level at a maximum of 23 students per class. We also offer a STEAM-focused option for families with LEGO education and Project Lead the Way. Furthermore, Carolina Voyager's new administrative team recognizes our areas of growth and learning gaps our students face. We are committed to our goals and vision for the future of Carolina Voyager. As an administrative team, we embrace the opportunity to close our achievement gaps. Through whole school collaboration, data-driven tiered interventions, and innovative approaches to learning, we believe that all students can reach their full potential regardless of their challenges, disparities, or biases they face, as long as there are educators in their lives who embrace the mindset necessary to be the catalyst for success. One of our most successful initiatives has been our WIN program, where we already witnessed tremendous growth, particularly in the areas of mathematics. As you deliberate of the future of Carolina Voyager, I implore you to consider the countless lives that you have been touched, that have been touched and transformed by the, by this institution. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, let us continue to support and invest in the future of our children and community by renewing the charter for Carolina Voyager Charter School. Thank you all very much.
Hi, I'm Frank Hardy. At the Cal meeting this past, oh, this month, I guess, there was discussion of the proposed 3.3 mil for three years funding for the school system. And at that time, one of the trustees asked the staff if they would please give them the total cost to the taxpayers of that. Needless to say, some of us didn't like that comment. Another trustee in an earlier meeting said raising taxes is unacceptable. This exposes some people on the board for thinking that even taxes for schools are evil evidence of too big a government or something like that. The truth couldn't be further from that. The money for schools is the best money spent by taxes in this state or any other state. America's free public schools catapulted the people of this nation into the most productive and inventive in the world. A well-educated graduating class every year is the most important capital the country can have. Capable and confident human capital. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Apostle Willette Scott Ash, retired CCSD teacher, 2019, president of the Charleston County Education Association, unified with the SCEA and NEA retirees. While I have reservations about the process that led to the appointment of Anita Huggins as superintendent, I do support her and Michelle Simmons' emphasis on classroom instruction. However, it appears from the February 12 Cal meeting that some board members may be attempting to undermine student achievement while pushing to decrease financial allocation by letting go of vital certified employees for corporate relationships such as business partners in the schools as volunteers, along with unpaid peer-to-lich, which is certainly not ideal. I strongly petition this board tonight for the support and passage of fiscal year 25 budget for continued success in the K-12 education. I quote tonight Sir Claus Mulda, "Education costs money, but then so does ignorance." I further quote William Feather, "A budget tells us what we can't afford, but it doesn't keep us from buying it." but it doesn't keep us from buying it." So, there is no better investment a nation can make than education. It is an investment in economic development, an investment in opportunity, and investment in our shared future. Additionally, I am in total agreement with Benjamin Franklin, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." Therefore, in closing, I charge this board to be transparent in this budget process and vote unanimously for sustaining academic gains, increasing support for all students, maintaining effective ESSR programs, increasing school autonomy, and the development of a three-year financial plan aligned with goal, board goals. Thank you very much, and do what is right, because righteousness exalts a nation. Sin is a reproach to any people.
Carl Bloom, Letitia Vaughn, Craig Logan, Anthony Bryant.
Good evening. My name's Carl Bloom. Today, we said the Pledge of Allegiance, but I noticed that last time, the school board did not take a pledge to follow the South Carolina School Board Association's ethical principles or your own BCA Code of Ethics. May I suggest something simpler and easier to follow? The Rotary's four-way test. One, is it the truth? Two, is it fair? Three, will it build goodwill? Four, is it beneficial to all? As it is, the board seems to be following the direction of a known hate group, the Proud Mothers, that to waste the school's money and generally break things. Please stop this and do right. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Letitia Vaughn, and right is right and wrong is wrong. The school board continues to violate its own policies and be inconsistent in its practices, and then act like they've done nothing wrong. We saw this with the hiring and the actions that ensued after the hiring of the former superintendent. We saw this with the hiring of the chief academic officer. We saw this with the appointment of the current superintendent as interim. We saw this with the approval of the new CFO. And unfortunately, these policy violations and inconsistent practices seem to fall along lines of race. And we now see this with the process or lack thereof by which the current superintendent went through to become permanent superintendent in Charleston County School District. And unfortunately, these policy violations and inconsistent practices, you cannot on one hand endorse a process and then on the other hand, not follow your own process because you like a person. On one hand, you cannot require that all members of the board be involved in every aspect of hiring, and then the next time, act as if it's not a violation to act on behalf of the entire board by signing and negotiating a contract, including terms and salary negotiations without the knowledge of the rest of the board members. The board chair does not have the right to make unilateral decisions for the entire board. Right is right and wrong is wrong.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Logan. I'm reading ethics in the CCSD website. So, Policy BB Board Legal Status and Job Descriptions dated one seventeen, paragraph five reads, "All powers of the board lie in its action as a body. Board members acting as individuals have no authority over personal or school affairs, nor may they bind the district in any way." Policy BCA Board Member Code of Ethics issued one seventeen regarding communication and interaction stats. Recognition that authority rests only with the board in official meetings and that individuals have no legal status to bind the board outside of such meetings. Policy BD Board Office issue two twenty-three defines duties of chairman contains no language on authorizing execution of contracts as an individual. So what is the process? Silence is complicit, alright? And so what sign are we sending to the parents and to the scholars and to the staff in our district? That the process does not matter. The actions of this board deepen the systematic issues that many people who look like myself face. That no matter how good you are or no matter how educated you are, it, what matters is who you know or maybe the agenda that you carry. This isn't a personal issue. This is a business issue. And so we have to keep in mind that not only are our students watching us, our parents are watching us, our community is watching us, and it is up to the board to uphold the ethics and standards to ensure that we are acting on the right side and that we are making the right decisions that ultimately place our students in the front of what we're doing. Thank you.
South Carolina Attorney General is in my phone. Be careful. Indirect initiatives is when the government gets involved with special interests to observe, surveil, and arrest people. That's called North Korea. So be careful at this day. My Facebook post was about public health, public safety. Minnesota Charleston County Solidity School Districts ended at crimes against children, human trafficking, criminal street gangs, domestic violence. Many of your vendors are members of the Commission on Law Forces Agency, Inc. Example, your Secret Service, twenty sixteen, public comment was made on behalf of the city of Charleston vendors protecting children of twenty-first century. Title one, protecting children. Title two, leading online predators. Title three, children list brokers. See Anthony G. Bryan, British Department of Education, Supreme Court, United States, twenty nineteen, as a pro-sailor again and from a populace for poor people. So my work was centered around land use and zoning for years. What we see here is, in my opinion, some zoning questions. And public safety is number one. And indirect initiatives is a nonpartisan board. There's no, there's no politics here, shouldn't be any here, but apparently it may be. I won't say it is, or isn't. But again, what you must do is look at the policy, look at the numbers, look at the money. The attorney general's got a lot of money in Columbia. He gives no notices for internet crimes. Human trafficking numbers were horrible two years back and forth. We have thirty-six in edu- we have thirty-six in public health in South Carolina. Forty-second education for fifty years. Many of our kids are clinical. So therefore, when police officers look at them and observe their behavior, they're clinical behaviors. They're not trained to deal with clinical issues. So I'm deeply concerned about that and you being a part of that discussion with Attorney General's Office, U.S. Attorney's Office, and others. I chose to be slotted out there with clinical problems. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Reverend Nelson Rivers, Cal Boyce, Susan Fender, Rebecca Hines, and Kendra, or Kendra Luch? Lucci? Yes, sir.
I'm Reverend Nelson B. Rivers the third. I think you know me. I have two parts to this. I'm gonna take the first minute and talk again about the process. The process really was an example of disparate treatment, and after it was over, continues to be an example of disparate impact. What do I mean by that? There was no African American who was afforded the kind of process you ended up with to select a superintendent. In fact, it was a far cry from any of that. The truth is, it's hard when you're black and try to get a job playing by the rules. And when the rules get bent, it's even harder. Let me get very specific. I sat in this meeting when Michelle Simmons had gone through a two-year process to lead, have her talent not questioned, her ability to be unmistakable. And then when she got, you voted against in the very last vote, it said to her, it's the process. I want to know, what does that mean? It's the process. That was code word to us. That means that you'll find another way not to give her a job she's qualified for. Fast forward, we come again to the same issue. She was, she had, and all those others that names were called, were qualified. They have a superintendent certificate. That didn't happen. So what is the process? How did the process end up that you bypassed all of that? Bypassed all the folk who might have applied for the job? And I think it's perfunctively to say this is not about Ms. Huggins, because it's not. We're not talking here, we're talking to you. You ended up deciding that somebody was going to get past all of the processes everybody else had to go through and become the superintendent. That dog won't hunt. It ain't fair. And it, once again, it proves to us as a community, we can't trust you. Because no matter what you say, what you do is a far cry from what you say. And what you, what you say is, go through the process, maybe we'll give you the job. Except if you look the right way, part of a different class or group, we'll bypass all the process to give you the job. And with this, I have a student contact me recently that his family was contacted to discourage him or discourage them from coming to speak at this board. I want to tell you, when you go to intimidating young people, you become what you say you're not. You've become an organization that's pride yourself more on pressure and tactics of fear than justice. Don't call a student to tell him not to come do what the Constitution guarantees he can do, they can do, which is speak under the First Amendment. He was called, his family was challenged, they were challenged, and I challenge you.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. The topic of the chairman nor the topic of, of our other staff are on the agenda for this evening. It shouldn't be discussed during.
Kelly, if you will allow, I would, I'm going to address that after everyone is done. Thank you.
My name is Cal Boyce. What this school board is doing is far-right white Christian nationalism. This school board is doing domestic terrorism to its own students, parents, and teachers. Banning books, removing and limiting youth autonomy. Putting your unqualified white cronies in power instead of hiring a stellar overqualified, all overqualified candidate because she was a black woman. Collecting a check rather than actually listening to the students, parents, and educators you serve. Are you aware of the harm and duress that you have put these students under? Are you aware of your role in America's rise to fascism? These public comments matter jack squat to this board. I think you put in earplugs before you sit in your high seat. We are going to find other ways to make you listen.
Hello, my name is Susan Fender. You recently read the ethics commitments for school boards, yet you did not sign it or publicly commit to them. Why wasn't it? You pledged to solemnly avoid using board position for personal or partisan gain. Yet the board chair spoke at a secret meeting of a nationally identified hate group, the so-called Moms for Liberty.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. Moms for Liberty nor anything this lady has discussed is on the agenda this evening.
This group supported the chair's election.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to reiterate? Mind people who, what the public comments are for?
Anti-LGBTQ plus and Proud Boy white supremacist.
I'm sorry, there's a point of order made, madam.
I, I, Mr. Kelly, as I read the policy, it does say, ma'am, I'm going to give you more time if you could stopper clock. I think the policy does say that you are to address items that are on the agenda, but also issues that may be.
Or pertain to the board. This board has no authority over Moms for Liberty.
Or pertain to the district, the district.
Yeah, or pertain to the district.
I didn't finish what I had to say.
Wait, I stopped your clock.
Well, let me go on.
Can I just chair this portion? Ma'am, please continue.
Thank you. This group supported the chair's election. Also anti-LGBTQ plus and Proud Boy white supremacist positions. And the public was barred from hearing his comments. You pledged to represent the interests of the entire district, not just special interest groups like the so-called Moms for Liberty, yet you decimated the Health Advisory Committee to take out the diverse voices our children need. You drove out the black superintendent.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there's nothing on the agenda that has to do with what the public comments about.
If you will allow me to. As soon as they're done, then we can get through it and we can move forward with the meeting. Is that okay?
I'm, I'm speaking to you, madam, as the one who's chairing this portion of the meeting as a point of order. There is nothing taking part in the public comments right now that has anything to do with the agenda.
What the policy says.
Okay.
And if you will allow me to finish chairing this portion of the meeting, I will address it as soon as everybody gets through saying what they want to say, and then we can move forward from there. Is that okay?
So for now, policy that requires what the public comments were supposed to be about doesn't matter? Is that what you're saying right now?
As it is regarding the policy.
I'm sharing it, and I'm going to allow them to continue to speak.
Okay.
And then I will address what your concerns are after we're done.
Everything I've said is a matter of fact. The next fact was you tried your best not to hire the most qualified and black CAO. But then you hired a white superintendent and circumvented the hiring process when you had the autocratic board chair suddenly decree her the superintendent. You pledged to work with other board members in a manner befitting the public's trust. Yet the five-member majority consistently work in secret to decide agendas and pre-work issues so as to railroad anti-democratic and awful hateful decisions. This is a farce. I do not want to see this continue. Your legacy is at risk of being about nothing but shame and incompetence.
Ma'am, before you go, before you, before you begin, I would like to ask the superintendent and general counsel, is there anything that you would like to provide clarity on with the, any erroneous statements that have been made? This is covered in policy. I am, they're, they're pressing me to enforce policy, so.
Madam Chair, I don't have anything to add at this point. If there's a particular question, I mean, the policy is, is, you know, the policy is the policy. And it is, you know, within the, within the, you know, within the, the responsibility, if you will, of the presiding officer to determine whether and how the policy should be enforced. And that is not so much a legal issue as it is an issue having to do with judgment and whether or not the conduct that is taking place is such that the presiding officer doesn't think it's appropriate or violates a policy. The policy is fairly clear, seems to me.
Superintendent, are there any erroneous statements that have been made that you would like to clarify? Be it on the behalf of the public or another board member?
Matters, uh, matters, Mrs. Watley, thank you for asking. To Carolina Voyager, thoughts about the mileage and the budget? No, ma'am. I don't, I don't think there's anything to, for me to, I don't think there's anything for me to correct at this time. Thank you.
Okay, please state your name and then continue with your comments.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Rebecca Hines. I'm a pastor and a parent of a child in the school district. I want the same thing for every child in this district as I want for my daughter. A high-quality education in a safe, supportive environment. And I want her and all her classmates to be treated fairly and equitably. It's hard to teach these values and qualities to children when the grown-ups elected to act on their best interests can't do the same. I have no problem with the current superintendent. I like her a lot. But I do have a problem with the hiring process. It wasn't fair, it wasn't equitable, and it may have been illegal. Title fifty-nine of the South Carolina Code of Law states that no teacher or other employee shall be employed or any purchase made except in a duly-called meeting of the board, of which meeting each member has been notified in writing by the clerk of the board at least three days in advance thereof. So how many times are you going to invite a lawsuit? We've endured this with you all many times before. The board chair again signed a con- the board chair this time signed a contract outside of a legal meeting, disenfranchising the vast majority of Charleston County residents, and here we go again. We've seen you all misbehave and, and waste all of our time and money, and we're sick of it. If we have this level of dysfunction at the top, how can we expect our kids to learn to do better? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kendra Luce. I use she/her pronouns. Thank you for allowance of our time tonight. The loss of a student is traumatic for the entire community. We've recognized one loss tonight, and I'm asking you to please prevent another. I want to call your attention to the loss of Nex Benedict, a non-binary student in Oklahoma who lost their life as a direct result of the superintendent. a non-binary student in Oklahoma who lost their life as a direct result of the superintendent's negative words, the actions of the State Library Advisory Committee, and Oklahoma's anti-trans bills. Here in Charleston, several of you have spoken openly against L B G T plus students. Books about LGBTQ lives are being challenged, and our state is debating anti-trans laws. You have the opportunity to extend that inclusion that you just asked for to all C C S D children. You can be proactive and you can prevent a tragedy like this from happening here in C C S D. The new policy committee is an excellent chance to make clear that Title IX is alive and well in C C S D. I hope you can agree that we all love our students. We want to protect all of our students, and you have the opportunity to take that action. Thank you.
Thank you. So before I move on to doing the summary, I want to address the objections of Mr. Kelly. The public comment policy, I hope that you will all go in and review. It's available for you. It states that public comments are supposed to be centered around the items that are listed on the agenda, and that's why he was objecting to the different comments that were being made. And they're depressing me to enforce all of the policy. However, this is a little bit of a more informal group, which is why I was being a little bit more gracious since everybody was behaving civilly.
Ms. Watley.
Yes, ma'am.
To clarify, the policy actually says or and/or is relevant to the district. So there is opportunity to talk about what's not on the agenda because the concern would be, we could actually just only put things on the agenda that we want to hear about if that were the case. This actually gives the public more freedom, and the policy does give them that. So I think the objections are actually out of line.
And I will add to that, that, I'm sorry, Ms. Watley, but I will add to that.
Can we move on? And in the future, I would just ask if we had points of privileges or points of orders because I think that would have been a point of order that we could have gone anyway.
I would just. At a, at a.
Can you speak up?
I'm sorry, I will say, where Ms. Watley was getting, say, we were at an audit and finance meeting. If we were to say that if you were, wanted to talk about anything that had to do with the budget, that's where that will fall into line at, not here where we're at a board meeting where anything that has to do with the district.
Thank you for the clarification. Let's move on. Can we, oh, I'm sorry, we still have the, you still have the chair.
Thank you. So the online public comments summary is 21, 21 comments were made about teacher, TA, and/or school-based certified staff compensation. One was, I know I'm going to say this wrong, and I'm just going to go ahead and own it. The Gobera Project, Carolina Voyager Charter, which, by the way, I've visited Carolina Voyager, and it's a very happy school. I enjoyed it very much. Public, there were three about the public comment signup format, one about committee of the whole and Cal Public Comment, one about the ethics pledge, 28 total. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Grabowski.
Thank you very much. Onto item four, the superintendent's report. Ms. Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Tonight, we're going to take a look at student engagement and how improved student engagement positively impacts student outcomes. The board has asked over the course of the last several meetings and in time that we've had with you one-on-one, more about student attendance and its impact specifically in regards to student achievement. So Maggie, we'll go on to the first slide here so that we can share what best practice and national research tells us about the importance of school attendance, that A is a key factor, obviously, in student achievement, that absenteeism as early as age five shows negative outcomes as early as first grade, and that students absent in kindergarten have greater chances of being absent in subsequent years and almost immediately lower achievement in reading, math, and just general knowledge. And of course, we know that high school dropouts are more likely to have been chronically absent from school. And so Maggie, if we go to the next slide, I want to share with you very quickly, I know you have a lengthy meeting tonight, how we have fared in regards to chronic absenteeism over the course of the last seven years. Chronic absenteeism is represented by students who are absent 10% or more of the school year, whether that be excused absences or unexcused absences or a combination of the two. You'll see here that after COVID, we had an, a significant increase in absenteeism, something from which we really have not recovered. Although we do see some promising results as a work, as a result of some of the internal strategies that we've implemented, we still struggle significantly from chronic absenteeism. And as we've met with principals in feeder patterns, it is consistently across the district, one of the key factors that we believe negatively impact our student achievement. So this year, we launched a show-up, glow-up campaign to focus on improved student attendance. So I'm going to ask Dr. Coakley if she would to give us, Dr. Coakley, do you mind coming up here to the, you got a mic? Yes, ma'am. Would you please give us a quick overview of some of the efforts of DOS this year as it partners with principals to improve student attendance?
Absolutely. I think if we go to the next slide, we have a list of some strategies. Can you guys hear me?
Jack.
Okay, great. So on the next slide, we have a list of some examples of the things that we've done. I want to start, we're talking about the show-up, the glow-up campaign that actually launched in August at our back-to-school celebration. That showed so much success that when we look at the data in June and compared it to August, there was almost a 6% reduction in our chronic absenteeism rate from June into August when we move up into our September data. Now that we have all of our scholars in school, we are talking about how do we maintain that decrease? And as you saw on the previous slide, we've been able to keep that decrease going at each quarter of looking at the report. The report that we just received on November 15th still shows that we are in a decline for our chronic absenteeism. But we're not moving at a rate that we would want, but we're still declining and decreasing where we need to go. So some of the things that we've been talking about are collecting from schools individually would be some student clubs, organizational clubs. At Wando, they have a curl club for our freshman group where basically no students left behind. Students are not seated in the cafeteria by themselves, they're feeling some belonging. And then that's paired up with our St. James Santee Scholars, where the curl club is actually going to St. James Santee to talk about the importance of schools. We also have, we see a lot of this happening in our D-10 community where there are celebrations and constant, constant talking about the data with the students, making sure those students have extra tutorial services, and then adult mentors. S E L and study skills at North Charleston High School, they're launching extra practice for those scholars who may have fallen behind in their academic curriculum area but need to address those areas because of either attendance issues or because they're just struggling. So students are coming to school, showing up either early and remaining late, so we can definitely fill in the gaps around those areas. Some of the things that I want to definitely make sure that I celebrate with the help of our superintendent, Mr. Baroi, who is in the room tonight, is that second chance rural bus stop pickup area. So this is a new initiative that's launched right after the Christmas break. So for scholars who may have missed that first go-round, they have that opportunity to get on that bus the second go-round. Now, it doesn't take away from the fact that they're still going to be marked tardy because they are tardy to school, but we have them in the building because chronic absenteeism doesn't kick in until they've missed 50% or more of the school day. So if we lose an hour, we'll make up that hour, but we don't want to lose the entire school day. Monthly attendance initiatives, and we are also launching, I put some links in there where you guys can see our Live Five lunch specials that we've been running on a monthly basis thanks to Ms. Denny in the Communications Office, where we're actually going into those homes. We're televising into those homes and talking about those tips. We've even worked with the news anchors who have been doing our taping to talk with them about their children and chronic absenteeism. A new, new, new language for a lot of our folks that really we weren't focused on before COVID. And then the big thing that you're going to begin to hear a lot more about, those attendance intervention plans. So we are required by the State Department of Education to put in place an attendance intervention plan for all students who are coded as truant. And truant starts as early as three days of missed absences or five consecutive days of unexcused absences. So that's when our schools really should be working on those attendance truancy plan. That will help play into the continued decrease in attendance for our schools. So I can go on and on about it, but hopefully that's given you a good overview so far, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley. So again, we learn a lot about some of the challenges that our principals are facing when we sit down with them and discuss the impact of certain organizational factors and organizational conditions that impedes their work. And we did find out this year in some of our areas in North Charleston and some of our more rural areas that students weren't getting on the bus. Granny, mom, dad were already going to work, kids overslept, didn't get up. And so we've worked with Mr. Baroi's team, as Dr. Coakley mentioned, to start these second chance bus routes throughout the communities, and we're seeing a really positive return. So we're beginning to try to really think outside of the box to help support families and students and get them in school. We also are focused on what goes on in the classroom and how we engage students around learning, which makes students want to come to school, even my own children, when they talk about their experiences in the classroom. And so we focused a lot on strategies with the lead of Mrs. Simmons, for which I'm thankful, and the associate superintendents on how we engage thoughtfully around the work. And so tonight, in the spotlight, Maggie, next slide, I want to highlight, again, I know the board agenda is very lengthy. So we've done a segment on OGAAP, which is a math strategy, particularly in Montessori schools, because typically, and Maggie, in the interest of time for the board, I'm going to not show the video because we have two principals here, particularly as it relates to Montessori. We don't normally, those of you educators and those of you not, may know that you don't typically do a whole lot of training over and above the Montessori model in Montessori schools. But OGAAP is something particularly in Montessori schools that our principals have asked their teachers to attend, and we're seeing a positive return on investment in regards to student achievement. You saw that last week as Dr. Williams, Ms. Simmons reviewed math data, excuse me, two weeks ago. And so today's spotlight features James Simmons Elementary School and Murray Lassane Elementary School. And we asked Mrs. Dylan Coffer and we asked Mrs. Wallace if they could be here to speak to you just briefly about the impact of OGAAP in their schools, and Mrs. Quinetta White, who is the principal supervisor for our Montessori schools, to give you an overview systemically from her perspective of the impact of this on the work and of improving student outcomes. So Mrs. Wallace and Mrs. Dylan Coffer, Mrs. White, if you could come up and briefly share your experiences. And the board, again, in the interest of time, will leave the spotlight for you to view at your leisure.
You're missing a great video if you don't watch it. So I encourage you to watch that video because it is, it's very encouraging. Meredith Wallace, I'm the principal at Murray Lassane. Love our little school. I would also like to invite our amazing assistant principal, Nikki Hollander, to join me. Here is my, my quick, easy take on OGAAP. It is an incredibly valuable professional development experience for our teachers. They come back and invariably, everyone says, that was life-changing. We're talking about math. And they come back, and it has changed them. And that's what we want. We want them to go away, spend their time in PD, and when they come back, they are transformed. Because who gets that at the end of the day? The children. And they're excited to come to school because their teacher understands the content they're teaching. We are very fortunate because we happen to have an OGAAP trainer as our assistant principal. And so we're really blessed because you understand it through and through. But for me, knowing I'm sending teachers out for a pretty lengthy PD and that you all have invested heavily in it, but that return on investment is well worth it. Mike to you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Thank you, Ms. Hollander, who is featured in the video. Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nikki Hollander. I'm the assistant principal. I am biased because I am an OGAAP trainer. But what I would also add is that Montessori is unique because we have six schools across our district. We go from Fryerson out on Wadmala all the way to East Cooper, Mount Pleasant. So we see such a range of students across the whole district. But if you were going to look at our Montessori data on the whole, you would see we would always have stronger E L A data for the most part, and our math data was pretty average prior to starting OGAAP. And so we were very intentional with our teachers over the past two years to get relatively all of our teachers through one or two modules of OGAAP. And we've seen drastic changes just in terms of the impacts on student achievement and what our teachers are able to do and talk about with math. So that's been the biggest takeaway for us, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Dylan Coffer?
Thank you. I'm Beth Dylan Coffer, the principal at James Simmons, and I just want to reiterate everything that Meredith said as well. It has been a great investment. I think OGAAP is a good professional development for all of our teachers, especially for Montessori because we have a mixed-age classrooms. So there are so many different strategies and tools that they're able to use in those mixed-age classrooms to maximize every second of that instructional time. And it has been mind-blowing. We are hoping that we will see the return on our math data, so we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Ms. Dylan Coffer. And Mrs. White, thank you for your leadership of supervising our Montessori's. Would you like to provide a, or would you please provide for us insight regarding OGAAP?
Sure. I'm Quinetta White. I'm one of the interim executive directors for the elementary learning community, and I have the pleasure of supporting our Montessori schools. I was a Montessori principal at James Simmons, and I was afforded the opportunity, thanks to the district, to go to leadership Montessori training in Houston, Texas. So I am a Montessori certified administrator. And so in saying that, with the OGAAP training, I just want to say, great job, team. And we know it's crucial to build capacity. OGAAP is an acronym for the Ongoing Assessment Project. OGAAP is research-based. We know if we invest in our teachers and build capacity, then they will stay. They are excited. I remember taking my one mathematics concept class as an elementary ed major a long time ago. And until I took my master's degree, began my master's degree in mathematics as education, that I realized the importance of knowing the why. OGAAP teaches the why. So we don't have to be afraid of mathematics. We understand it's not 100,000 problems and do them wrong and then go back and redo them. It's meeting children where they are and having the tools to take them to the next level. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Ms. White. Thank you, Ms. Dylan Coffer, Ms. Hollander, and Ms. White.
Ladies, if I could ask you to stand by the podium, I'm assuming we're at the end of the presentation, and in case some of our board members have questions.
We are right at the end. I'd love for you all to stand there and get ready for those questions. It's important to note, again, you will see in this video, it's about five minutes, you will see this sort of engagement of what you see there pictured with this two students and the teacher at James Simmons. You'll see students authentically engaged, thinking about how to do math a different way than I think all of us probably learned how to do math. They learn memorization in a different way other than the rote timetables that I learned, even my children learned, and they're still in our K-12 system. So I urge you to watch this. OGAAP is not something limited to our Montessori schools, but it's something they've done exceptionally well, given the modules for which they work around Montessori. And we really want to thank Ms. Hollander for her leadership. Very quickly, Maggie, there's one more slide here to share with you regarding student absenteeism and how this impacts communities and homes. So I want to assure the board, again, given your questions recently about student attendance and truancy and the impact of that on our children, particularly our children in poverty, children of color, is that we're looking at things within the community to engage authentically with parents to determine how we best support. If you see here, Dr. Coakley, again, has an early release day challenge. As we've looked at our data, we see that more students just don't come to school on early release days because, you know, why? They're there for a certain number of hours, nobody's going to be home, kids are sleeping in. So we've organized a campaign around such. We've started doing home visits. Again, as Dr. Coakley just mentioned, we're doing public service announcements. We've engaged with Trooper Bob all around the work about student attendance. Dr. Coakley's team has. Dr. Cogly's team has also, I think some of you have attended, some of the space monthly meetings where parents have engaged with her about the hardships they have sometimes getting their kids to school. It's really heart-wrenching. We've also collaborated with some nonprofits, particularly in North Charleston. We have partnerships with DSS and DJJ. And again, we're authentically attempting to engage with community, our churches, and other partners about how we best support families in this work. Because that absenteeism rate is not declining at the rate at which we would like for it to do so. And we know that what improves student attendance comes improved student achievement. So again, I want to thank you for your interest in student attendance and its impact on children. And I want to thank these ladies for helping us highlight some of the instructional pieces that we're doing to authentically engage kids. So we're certainly open to any questions you might have, Mr. Grabowski and board.
And the board will open the floor to any board members that would like to ask the superintendent, Dr. Cogly, or OGAAP experts, any questions, any questions?
Just a couple.
The board recognizes Ms. Waters.
Thank you. What other schools is using OGAAP or are using OGAAP? A large majority of them. Dr. Swearingen?
All of them.
At, at their various stages of implementation, Mrs. Waters, sort of like some of our restorative practices, you know, there are various levels, but we have really invested a lot monetarily in this, and it will be a significant budget line item.
One of the follow-up questions I have then is, in terms of being able to operate at this level that Montessori schools are able to operate at, does that have anything to do with the fact that traditional classrooms don't have the same resources? Or, you know, because they're, they use different items? I mean, what is, what is the reason that it works so well in Montessori versus traditional setting?
It works equally. It's a great question. It works equally as well, Mrs. Waters, in traditional classrooms. I think one of the reasons we chose to highlight Montessori in discussing with Ms. White this opportunity is that we thought it would be more challenging to implement some of the OGAAP strategies, but given Maria Montessori's model. But it has gone exceptionally well in our, in our, our Montessori schools. Likewise, it's doing very well in some of our other schools. And we're, we're sort of tracking right now to be, we've done one of those impact reports that you've seen from ESSER. We've done that with OGAAP. And Mr. Costner is working with Dr. Williams and Dr. Swearingen to, to track the level of professional development of teachers in OGAAP as it directly relates to student achievement. So we can see how deep we need to go and where we get the most return on investment.
Awesome. And thank you for naming too, that going to the student truancy issues, that what happens in the building really is, I think, one of the biggest issues. Do students feel motivated to go to school because they believe they're actually getting something out of it? It's something that I think all school systems need to address.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for that, Mrs. Waters. We're, we're using some of the data we collect around student belonging to sort of highlight where we think we need more strategies to support students. So thank you for that.
Any other questions for any of the board members? Mrs. Roberson?
Thank you. My question is, thank you, OGAAP team. My question is for, questions for Dr. Cogly. What does, what does family outreach look like in the rural areas?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. So the family outreach one, we'll talk specifically about the D-23 collaborative. So we have Ms. Schengler, who is our engagement officer, who's out there working with the D-23 collaborative group. But when we talk about family outreach, making sure that we meet the needs of the families out there versus making sure or versus asking that they come to us. Sometimes that boots-to-the-ground action for our rural areas is much required. And we also are talking about how do we circle around into those areas because we understand transportation is an issue. So about a couple of weeks ago, one of the asks that I had of my team was to work with the D-23 collaborative to figure out how we could bring a space event specifically for D-23. Because the expectation would be not that they get to a downtown West Ashley or North Charleston area. So we are tailoring a space event specifically for that D-23 area. And we're just waiting for the feedback on what day would work best.
Okay, great. And as well as D-9?
D-9 as well. So for D-9, for family outreach, one of the asks of Dr. Temple was for us to collaborate around really looking at the alcohol drug issues that's impacting a lot of the, the students out in that D-9, D-3 area. So the collaboration that we're working on is to actually launch the screen measures showing that will take place in those areas. So we can really identify what's happening with our students, what's causing you to not want to be in school, or what's causing a lot of our families to have those stresses around why students aren't interested or engage in school when they do arrive. So each area is kind of getting something tailored based off of their needs because it's not a one-size-fits-all.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I have, I do have one final question. When do you begin these measures? And I guess this is like a general question, not just to my districts. When do you begin to put measures in place? Is it after 10 absences? Is it after five? When do you start putting measures in place?
So great question. We have a monthly attendance initiative calendar that goes out to the school. They actually have access to it on the internet, the, the database that we keep, School Support Services, Ms. Lisa Allison's team, where they've created a matrix or a bank of what schools can pull from. So the interventions start day one, day one. So we have those tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one is where all students in the school could benefit from understanding what attendance, truancy, chronic absenteeism, and even our families. When a student misses a day out of school, there should be some type of contact and outreach for that student. I, my cell phone last week benefited from an outreach because my boys had the flu on last week. So immediately I got contact from the school administrators with an email. It handed me a note that I can fill out and send back to the school. So it kind of takes the burden off of the families on what's needed if they need those extra measures. Day three is when we definitely need to be to the table. Three consecutive days, we need to start getting those families to the table so we can actually put in place that attendance intervention plan that I spoke about earlier.
Okay, final question. And do all buildings, are they still housed with attendance officer and a truancy officer?
So unfortunately, no, not at this time. But you guys are going to hear some ask of the district. So I've been taking this school year, part of the summer, to really talk about what is it that we're not doing that we see schools in our community, in our size, actually doing? So I've already presented a presentation to cabinet to talk about truancy interventionist, boots-to-the-ground action. We're putting a lot of emphasis on schools to do those attendance intervention plan when we already know that the day is stacked with various things. So having those truancy interventions in place, making sure that we're actually dealing with those students who are chronically truant because they're, that's that intent of not coming to school. How do we address those issues? But then if we get those items in place, we can now go to the court system as our neighboring district to talk about how do we hold accountability in place? So you will hear more information about that in the future. Thank you. You are welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cogly. Thank you, Ms. Roberson.
Any other questions? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I, I think this is for Mr. Burrowey, but this, the, the late bus, the second chance bus. Do we have metrics on what that costs and secondarily, how many students use it?
I don't have the cost here in front of me, Dr. Kelly, but we are tracking that. And I can certainly provide the board an update on both cost and usage. It's been in place at three schools in the rural areas. The cost is generally minimal because we've already paid for the bus drivers. They're making the second run. But I'll certainly provide the board that data.
Thank you.
And if I can just add to that for some clarity, these are, when we talk about the second bus run stop, we're not talking house-to-house pickup for students. We're talking general locations. Maybe a dollar general location where the parents are having to get those students to. The schools that are currently using it would be EB Ellington, Mount Zion, and Mini Hughes Elementary, with our most success coming from EB Ellington. So we did do a lot of actual media outlast directly to that school. Huge support from the school principals, flyers, and so forth. So it's going to look different at each school where some schools hadn't had to utilize it at all per se. But then we have to dig a little bit deeper to figure out if you're not utilizing the first stop or the second opportunity, what else can we do to further support you? What are those barriers?
Would you mind clarifying? You said most success. What does most success mean?
When I say most success, I'm talking about that daily usage of that second bus stop chance. You know, we're seeing our EB Ellington family really take advantage of that. Even if it's three students or one student, we see a student getting on that bus to come to school.
True. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Grabowski?
Oh, Dr. Temple, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this presentation on absenteeism. I have been reading a lot about it nationally and wondered what was happening locally. So I think I was excited to hear about the OGAAP program. And I think it's good that we're diminishing the number of early release days. But I'm also encouraged by, when we do have early release days, that the schools have been doing some phenomenal things to keep kids interested so that they feel when they come to school that it is worthwhile. My question is, are we doing anything with the early release days and through our Kaleidoscope program to support students who, you know, maybe can't go home and, and have the childcare and the extended daycare?
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy to say, or proud to say that this was an issue, again, that our principals, particularly our elementary school principals, brought up during the, during our SDRs, Dr. Temple. And we were able to find funding to expand Kaleidoscope in most all of our schools on early release days for all students. And so that has helped with some of our attendance rates due to, or lack of attendance due to early release. Again, these are things that when you communicate with principals regularly, they'll tell you and you can, you can put measures in place almost immediately to, to, to resolve some of this, the problem.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the, the questions.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, I had about seven questions, but because I'm Ms. Waters and a couple of other questions, I got about three now. So and, and thank you, Dr. Cogly, because one of my questions I had to look at was, I was actually about to look at was about using our second chance pickup for the students and trying to see how we are making sure our students are not using that second chance pickup as their main pickup option. So with, with your clarification on that, that, that helped me a lot. But what I really want to know now would be how the truancy hearings have transformed over the last few years that have helped the students and families curb their chronic absenteeism that we see today.
That's a really good question. And I should have talked about that because that's definitely a proud moment for Charleston County School District. We, the, the state requires that we have some type of truancy hearing, just like your disciplinary hearing process, right? And so we have an up-and-running, established truancy hearing panel in Charleston County School District where schools can submit a truancy hearing packet to our office for that hearing to be conducted. On that hearing panel, we have social workers, DSS basically is present. We have DMH. We also have our climate coaches, Ms. Lisa Allison's team is a part of that hearing panel. DJJ is also involved in that process. And when we get our students to the table, when we get our families to the table, it is definitely a problem-solving mechanism that we're using. We're looking at the attendance intervention plan that the schools had already implemented and deciding what needs to be tweaked, added to. And unfortunately, in some cases, it may be where we have to refer that student to a court process when we talk about seeking additional assistance. Very, very rarely does it ever lead to court procedures for a student. If it takes that route, it's because the parent has really shared the need for further support and services that Charleston County can't provide. But it's an in-house problem-solving process where that student now leaves out with another attendance intervention plan that's required by the state now at the district level. My office assigns a prevention and intervention facilitator who now monitors that student's attendance plan. We only have three for the district. And those PIFs monitor not only attendance, but they monitor student discipline for students who are on probation. And if students violate that attendance intervention plan that's put in place, that is when we move to the next level of seeking assistance with the Department of Social Services. Those steps are mandated by the State Department of Education. So nothing that Charleston County School District is impeding on for our families, but what we're required to do to address truancy and chronic absenteeism. So we definitely have a stellar truancy hearing panel, looking to grow that. And when we say grow it, not have more students before it, but have more agencies and community partners willing to assist us in addressing truancy and chronic absenteeism.
Thank you. And that actually leads directly into my next question because you say we only got three PIFs throughout the entire district. And so if we're looking at the fall of the ESSER funding, how do we take what we are looking at as far as ESSER funding and what you need for the upcoming budget or whatnot to increase the PIFs or to how we try to keep going with the curbing of the truancy that we, truancy rate that we have right now?
I'm also happy to say that I have zero funded ESSER employees on my team. So all of my employees are through GOF or EIA at risk. So my three PIFs, two are under GOF and one is under EIA at risk. So if anything, what we did, Mr. Calhoun, that you would be very familiar with, is we used to service level two and level three students who were on probation. For this year, in order for us to support the need for attendance and discipline, we're servicing level two students who are on probation for discipline in hopes that it avoids them from moving to a level three incident. Most of our students who are at level three for probation already have a DJJ probation officer or somebody working with them. So we're taking our opportunity to really work with those level two. Thanks to Ms. Huggins and HR, I was given an additional staff member in January who was working with community partnerships and mentorships. So next month, we are launching at the sunset of ESSER, we're launching a community business partnership group that will come together and hear how else can they support the district outside of ESSER funding, really pulling out the needs. We're collecting that needs inventory from our schools to say, what is it that you need? So we're building that mentorship thing. We're building groups like my community mentors keeper with Mr. Keith Smalls. How can you get into schools, make sure that they have MOUs in place to go into our schools?
Cool. Thank you. And I look forward to hear more about that over the next couple of weeks as we go into the workshop or whatnot. So my last question, I, I promise this is my last question. This possibly, yeah, so I, I really want to know, how can we expand the OGAAP model into some of the rest of the district? I know that is being implemented through most of the schools right now. But how do we take that, if it's working through everybody else? And how do we grow that and put money into that and make it work for the rest of the schools?
Mr. Calhoun, we've been working on OGAAP implementing, rolling out OGAAP for the last five years or so. And so Dr. Davis's team, curriculum and instruction, they're responsible for rolling this out. And the majority of his district instructional specialists are trainers. And so what's happened is capacity-wise, it is extensive training. And so teachers are out of their buildings two to four days for this training. So it's not just at face value, the training, it's securing substitute teachers and making sure that kids aren't missing, you know, a lot of quality instruction while their teacher is absent for this training. So we try to maximize summers to get the training done. We have some schools where the entire faculty is trained at the urging of the building level leader. And then we have some schools where we are grade level by grade level, trying to attempt to get as many trained as possible. But that's our goal and our intention, to make sure the masses are trained because the program impact report showed us that teachers who have OGAAP training, their students are faring better in terms of academic achievement. Their overall performance on our interim assessment has been solid. And so we know that it's valuable. It's a, it's a big undertaking that we are putting effort into making sure system-wide, we're, we're making sure everybody's exposed. But it's a process, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. I appreciate it.
Floor recognizes Mrs. Roberson for one question.
One question. Your question, your response, Dr. Cogly, led me to a thought. When you start looking at the CBOs, we've had some hiccups with ESSER and CBOs. I would like for you to be intentional and very thoughtful in selecting CBOs that have evidence-based information to share that they have worked in this field before and not just bring anyone on. And then lastly, we do need CBOs that are interested in coming out to the rural areas. And I'll leave it right there. We, we need to have CBOs that will come out as far I'll leave it right there. We need to have CBOs that will come out as far as Ward Millaw and as far as Eddie Stone.
I appreciate you saying that. And I'm going to give you a ask to the board. And we have already started reviewing some of the programs that have submitted their MOUs or requests for services. Some folks who have come before you at the podium requesting for services, and unfortunately, they do not have the data to support the work that they are trying to present. They don't have a business plan or a structure in place. And so we have been very intentional about reviewing what's being requested and then sending out our correspondence as to why we're not able to move forward. Some, we are willing, you know, to sit and talk because they're about 80% there on their way. So here are some of the missing pieces that you need. So again, Ms. Crawford was reassigned to us thanks to Ms. Simmons and Ms. Huggins and HR. And she is phenomenal at making sure that those pieces are in place for that intentionality around those MOUs. So I'm excited. I'll need your support in making sure as folks reach out that you're supporting us. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Gabroski, I got a question to that right there.
Mr. Calhoun, one question, please. Recognize you.
Oh, okay. I just got a question to Ms. Huggins. So are we receiving this, the CBO MOUs?
No, sir, we're not at this point. Dr. Coakley is facilitating all of that. But we will keep the board abreast of partnerships. And Mrs. Grobowski, I really appreciate your comments about evidence-based CBOs and those that are interested in going to the utmost ends of the county to ensure that students are well served. But Mr. Calhoun, we certainly will keep you abreast of how things are going as we progress.
All right. So the point of information I would have, who has the final say on the CBOs?
Well, so as long as it doesn't exceed the threshold of 250, typically we do.
So let me just say that right now, I'm not entertaining any organizations that are asking for money. I'm looking for individuals, again, because we don't, I don't have funding for my department. So we are looking for those who are wanting to give back. These are the organizations that have been reaching out to me and my department for support. If there's anything else as far as funding or organizations that are asking for monetary payback, I would, we would make sure that the MOU is in place, but it wouldn't be anything that we would approve through the Department of School Support. So this really is about a giving back process around mentorship, building community collaboration. There are a couple of organizations that we have been working with. I will be honest with you, our domestic violence anti-bullying with Mr. Christian Rainey. We have seen great, great feedback from our schools on that anti-bullying and domestic violence curriculum that he's been implementing. That so far has been free of charge. When we look at these programs and initiatives, we are seeing where Charleston County School District may need to come to the table to talk about how do we, you know, lift that work? Those will be conversations that we come before you all and Ms. Huggins about for services.
Right. Thank you. And that's, so that's what I want to get back to is the process. So I know, so say you not, so say if you have an organization that wants to come to you who has no type of monetary, monetary cost to it, but you see it as a good for the district and for our students or whatnot. It will come to you, then it's a MOU, then it will come to the district office. Where would the board have?
So it filters through our procurement, Mr. Calhoun. And then if it's within our budget and it doesn't violate policy, we approve those things internally. There are, as you know, contracts that we need to bring forward to the board if they reach a certain threshold. But again, we will certainly keep you abreast and and even even when people want to offer services, we want to make sure they're aligned with the district's goals and our efforts around student achievement. So again, we are so grateful for the graciousness of the of the public and those who want to support, but it's important to us that the work is aligned with our efforts as they relate to improving student outcomes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, we appreciate you and thank you, Dr. Coakley.
Board recognizes Ms. Wattley.
Thank you, Mr. Grobowski. Ms. Huggins, we've, in our private one-on-ones, the public's obviously not there to hear. So we've talked about with the different vendors and Sunset of ESSER, blah, 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 about the budget and fiscal responsibility and sustainability. So my question is about with the O-GAP, similar to what we've discussed privately, is there an opportunity going forward with O-GAP that we could have our trainers train people within the district?
So I'm going to let Ms. Simmons, the answer is yes. And I think we have some. Ms. Simmons, would you expand on that? We got Dr. Davis right behind you.
As he makes his way to the microphone, we do have a task force, Ms. Wattley.
So there are opportunities to answer your question, there are opportunities. I have DIS, District Instructional Specialists that are on my team, that we said we have a couple that are, we have more than a couple that are trained. So for example, I have some, I have about two DISs that are trained in O-GAP additive, multiplicative fractions proportional that covers the span of grades K through nine. And so each summer, we send a DIS to to get trained, to come back to be able to train staff within our school. So I want to tell you, we have an O-GAP task force that meets about every other week just for this, to figure out how we can make this scan, this 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 training across the system, grades K through nine. And that training plan encompasses teachers receiving certificate renewal credits as well as graduate credits through the College of Charleston. So they do say we have it, we have expanded it to our local higher institutions to be able to assist with this. And what the research is telling us that the impact in terms of when students are taught by teachers who have been trained in O-GAP, they do have an impact in terms of improving student outcomes. So yes, it's ongoing and that we're expanding it across the system.
And then I just have a follow-up question to that. You started off by saying that O-GAP is a significant line item in the budget. Would that reduce the expense?
It's covered in Title II. We got it.
We use alternate funding for.
Special revenue.
Okay, great.
Special revenue money. I know you all, we know you all are interested though in how we use all of our funding. So we use a large majority of Title II, which is geared toward professional development for this piece.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, talk for me. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Ms. Bailey?
I have two questions. One is, what are some incentives the district can or is offering per school to lower the rate of absenteeism across the district?
That's a great question, Mrs. Bailey. I think those incentives vary among schools, Dr. Coakley. You, I'm sure you have a really, you look eager to answer. So go right ahead, Dr. Coakley.
So we do a lot of requests from our community partners and our businesses. We've gotten donations from organizations. We've done celebrations at the schools. The challenges have been across social media. You may have seen some of my wild and crazy videos that we've posted over the school year. We have also talked about how do we identify students? Families have done videos really promoting school attendance, student attendance. I'm at their school. We've done the challenges, like what we've talked about. In the monthly calendar that schools can access that tells them throughout the week, here's something that you can do with your students. We fold in those, I keep looking this way for Ms. Allison, I don't even know if she's over there. But we fold in our PBI as celebrations with our students and families. And then we highlight and we talk about, you know, who's that class or that student or that teacher? Teachers have reached out to talk about what else can they do in their classrooms? And just today, we sent an email off to a teacher who wanted to know about more incentives. So we really cater to the needs of the individual schools, plus we have district-wide events and socia's. If I had my idea of what we can do, we've talked about some district-wide celebrations by constituencies of having those carnival-like themes at the end of the year for families who really met the quota, identifying supports for our families. And those will be long-term things that we build when we talk about that three to five-year plan. So I'm not asking for any money just yet.
And the last question I wanted to ask was, when you have a problem with absenteeism, who does the home visits? And are they cultivating like community? Are the are the parents being receptive to it? Or do they feel antagonized?
So that relationship-building piece is what's important first, right? So we ask our schools, because a lot of our schools will have parent advocates or liaisons or trusted adult, if they're going to do the home visit, if they want support on that home visit, we could provide that as well. We have one attendance coordinator plus all of our staff. So DOS is all hands on deck when it comes down to dealing with anything inside the department, whether it be discipline or attendance. When we say boots-to-the-ground action for acceleration schools, it might look like a caravan inside the community. So there are about 20, 30 adults that show up and we're knocking on doors and we're talking with our families. At another school, it may be a list of students or addresses that we need to either call out or we need to do those home visits for. It could be wine. So whatever it is that the school need, we tailor it to that. Next year, when we go for our plan, it would be our truancy interventionist, you know, taking that burden off of our schools and knocking on those doors and doing those attendance intervention plan if we, you know, pass that budget for that.
Thank you, Dr. Coakley. Ms. Bailey, could I also, I want to ask Ms. Simmons. She supervises Lisa Allison's team. You want to talk a little bit about Lisa's work, Ms. Simmons, and how Lisa supports this?
Sure, Ms. Bailey. While Ms. Allison's not here today, she is watching intently and wanted to make sure I relate to you that our social workers are the boots on the ground as well. They're able to have a direct touch to families, home visits and such. And so while we have the layer of support from Dr. Coakley's office, we also have that from Student Support Services as well. So we're trying to layer on support as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
I should have known that truancy and math would create such a heated, but it's been a very enlightening. And I applaud the staff. I do have, and I'm glad my O-GAP experts sat down. I wouldn't have liked you standing it, but I do have one question on the Montessori system and the use of O-GAP. And it really goes into the range in trying to understand the Montessori system that you have certain students that may be in a class performing at a second grade level and other members in the class that are performing at a third or fourth grade level. So it really comes back to when we've got gaps within classrooms in our standardized classrooms. Is that how this is working? I mean, is that how it's working within the Montessori system?
Thank you, Mr. Grobowski, for your question. So the Montessori system, the schools are set up where students are, there are three age ranges in each classroom. And so this affords the teacher the opportunity to differentiate instruction. So with the O-GAP piece, it's just an added level of skill set for the teacher. It's not a curriculum, it's professional development, right? And so when a teacher assesses the students, we assess, we use the continuous improvement model and we assess consistently. And then that assessment, formative assessment drives the instruction. So the teacher can plan for students specifically based on their needs. And they have all the curriculum and the Montessori materials in the classroom for three age levels.
Thank you. Now I understand how, why Ms. Simmons has been fighting and working with us for five years into the standardized programs. Thank you very much. With that being said, I think we need to move on. And I appreciate all the input from staff and the board. And we will move on to item five, the Strategic Education Committee. First item up is item A, the Monitoring Report Interim Goal 1.2 African-American, Black, and Hispanic Kindergarten Early Reading Readiness and Overall Kindergarten Fast Bridge Early Reading, Early Math Winter Progress. Ms. Huggins?
Thank you, Mr. Grobowski. Jennifer Swerengen monitors and provides support along with Mrs. White and Francie Mitchell from our elementary school. So she's going to do a quick overview of how students are doing as far as their kindergarten readiness and then how groups of students are doing, given the disparity between them. Dr. Swerengen, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. And Jackie Haynes also has seven of our elementary schools, so she is a wonderful partner in this work as well. So this particular monitoring report is interim goal 1.2 African-American and Hispanic Kindergarten Early Reading Readiness. We're also going to review overall kindergarten, fast bridge, early reading, and early math winter progress as well. Okay, sorry, I'm not coordinated with your screen up there and I can't read it. Okay, so our first slide here is our African-American and Black and Hispanic kindergartners. So as you can see over time, this is their data on fast bridge. Spring, fall, we have winter of 23, which was last year, of course, this time was 42% low risk. So fast bridge calibrates the students into into three different categories. Low risk obviously is what we want, and that's students that are at the 40th percentile or higher. Some risk is 15 to 40% and high risk is below the 15th percentile. So the the measure here is the percent of students low risk, which is what we want. So winter last year, we were at 42% and winter of this year, we're at 51% for this particular student group. So we had a nine percent increase there. Comparatively, for all kindergarten students, winter of 23, 57% were demonstrating low risk and winter of this year, 66. So we also had a nine percent increase across all of our students. Same exact data for math. This is all kindergarten students. So in math of last, winter of last year, it was 72% and winter of this year is 74% low risk. So we had an increase of two. And for the specific student group associated with this goal, winter of 23 was 55 and winter of 24 was 59. So we saw a 4% increase in demonstrating low risk on fast bridge, early math. Some strategies that we believe are contributing to the increase, all four of those slides showed an increase from winter of 23 to winter of 24. Job embedded coaching support. And that is classroom teacher support from our school-based coaches. All of our elementary schools have reading coaches and about 21 of our elementary schools have math coaches. We also have, as Dr. Davis alluded to earlier, our district instructional specialist. So each of the level leaders has a reading coach, a reading district instructional specialist and a math district instructional specialist that we can also utilize for coaching support. Letters training. Letters training is a professional learning to provide deep knowledge to be literacy and language experts in the science of reading. We're doing letters training with all K-3 teachers, our literacy interventionists, our multilingual teachers, special education teachers, and our school administrators. You've heard this mentioned several times, the district-wide student data reviews. Those are very beneficial in the fact that district staff literally surrounds the principals. And we hear they'd go through a slide deck of their challenges and their needs. And just like what Dr. Coakley said about chronic absenteeism and a lot of things we touch on, we glean that information through these school data reviews. I find them to be very productive. Pre-K expansion ongoing. That's the addition of CD classes throughout our district, which we know the more students that we can have in CD programs, full day with certified teachers, the readiness level of our kindergarten students will be improved by that. I think y'all have been O-Gapped up tonight. That's one of our strategies. And I think that's been discussed pretty completely tonight. Strengthening PLC practices, of course, that's our professional our our learning communities. And that is where our administrators and our coaches meet with grade level chairs, our grade level teachers. We do a lot of unpacking of standards, the no-show charts, a lot of the work that Dr. Williams has has worked to bring to our principals. The data-driven instruction, which includes the unpacking of standards, the no-show charts, looking at student exemplars to instruct to the gaps. And then, you know, working with the teachers on strategic questioning. Future work, spotlighting teachers and best practices. We do that in a lot of different ways. We do that at board meetings. We also do that at learning community principal meetings, at lead meetings and best practices, certified pre-K teachers. And then, of course, as we kind of made the connection earlier, the textbook adoption and the curriculum support to make sure that we have a good, healthy, viable, standards-based curriculum for all of our students.
Thank you, Dr. Swerengen. I also want to recognize Jackie Haynes, whose schools continue to see improvement in the acceleration zone. She's doing a lot of work around K-2 improvement. Ms. Haynes, would you like to talk a little bit about what you're seeing in strengthening PLCs and your focus on K-2? So it's beyond kindergarten readiness?
Yes, thank you. So we've had the opportunity in all of the acceleration schools and throughout the district to really work with our teachers and PLCs, professional learning communities to make sure that they are internalizing the lessons and looking at student data so that they can improve academically and improve those students. One of the areas that we're really focusing on, and we just did this last week, is for our principals to go to to go to classrooms that have strong K-two teachers that are implementing skills block and to actually observe that classroom. Our principals went last week and it was an eye-opener for some of them. So they have developed plans to really look at what the other K-two classrooms look like in their schools and implement some stronger practices. As you see, our results are going up, but we still need improvement in our K-two areas to ensure that when they get to third, fourth, fifth, they're ready.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Appreciate the work you're leading. So, Mr. Grabowski, we're certainly open to any questions you all may have about kindergarten readiness.
Mr. Kelly, do you have any questions? Ms. Waters?
Yes, I'm just a little bit confused. So this is, this kindergarten readiness is assessing the four-year-olds? So why do we assess readiness? Or I guess this is a precursor to the overall goal of readiness? Is that what, what's happening?
I apologize. I'm not sure I understood.
So I, so I thought this was like readiness to read and I guess I'm just wondering who, so we're assessing the kindergartners, I guess, in advance of the, the, the third grade test? Is that what's happening? Okay. And then if, if so, we have spring, fall and winter. But that would cover more than one school year. So I was just a little bit confused about how to read the progression. Like if, you know, the spring twenty-two, a person would be in a different group.
Children. So Dr. Swerengen, two different cohorts. So Dr. Swerengen referred to last year this time.
Okay.
Those kids are now in first grade, but we were looking at kindergarten kids from last year and kindergarten kids this year. So it's not a same, like, cohorts.
Okay. So when we're looking, so then when we're looking, if it's not the same cohort, am I to read this as the first set of spring, fall, winter is one and then the second set of spring, fall, winter is two? So when I'm looking at the spring, sixty-one percent, fall, sixty-seven percent, and then winter, fifty-seven percent? I guess what, one of my concerns here is normally I can read a graph pretty decently. This is very confusing to me. And so if we could just have it presented a little differently because I'm not picking up on what I'm supposed to see here. It was very difficult for me to figure out what the increase was.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Ms. Waters. Ms. Roberts, will you explain the, the groupings?
So what we wanted to do is actually provide you with spring, like as many comparisons as we could. So like if you take that graph on slide four, for instance, and we're looking at all kindergarteners. The way the goal was originally set, and maybe I should have actually taken slide three because that's actually focusing on the goal. The goal was set using spring twenty-two data. So that's why we provided that baseline. And then we wanted to show you what has occurred with our kindergartens since that time. So that's why we started there. Maybe a line graph might be helpful to maybe see how that's progressing. But it's basically, this assessment's given three times a year. But because we started with that spring twenty-two, that's why we provided that as the first point, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
And we thought it would be disingenuous not to, we started with just fall and spring and we added winter. Because we wanted to be as transparent as possible about same cohort of students, if that makes sense. We apologize. We'll, we'll do better at the representation of the baseline next time, Ms. Waters. No, I mean, that second explanation made sense to me.
Thanks.
I agree. Mr. Grabowski? Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, so yeah, Ms. Waters got exactly where I wanted to get, because I was wondering, I, I wanted to get to exactly what assessment they were taking. And just thinking about the kindergarten assessments that they, that they were taking and whatnot. So thank you, Ms. Waters, for those questions because that's, that's exactly where I was about to go with it. And I was gonna try to toss it to Ms. Roberts for that. So thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
If I could just say one more thing, I think it might be helpful too. One of the things that we think about when we look at this, there are a couple of things that you can look at that I think would be helpful. Comparison of that winter twenty-three and winter twenty-four, that gives you the same administration period. So we wanted to make sure that we showed that. The other thing that I would really look at would be that fall twenty-three and then, of course, winter twenty-four so that you can see what that progression looks like. Another thing to just point out with this particular assessment, fast bridge, you are assessing different things at different times. So students are expected to gain additional you know, during those different administrations as well. Sorry, I just want to make sure you had all that context.
Mr. Kelly?
I thought I understood this until Ms. Waters asked the question. She did. I apologize. So put this in third grade language for me here, since we all know I'm not the brightest fellow out here. The higher number is better because we are looking at the percentage of students who are not prepared or that are, that are we're looking at the percentage of students who are low risk for being not ready.
Right. Low risk is good. You want to have the higher percentage here because this is for low risk.
Sure.
Because there isn't anything that says like no risk.
Understood. Yeah, totally understood. So that's what I thought I understood. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't totally clear after Ms. Waters' explanation or that question. So then the other half of this question then is how does the school district impact students readiness before they're in kindergarten?
Me, damn.
Beg pardon?
I think that was Dr. Temple.
I figured that was the answer, but it was rhetorical.
I'll let the experts explain.
You turn.
Well, so thank you, Dr. Temple. You kind of short-circuited the logic here. That, that was kind of the, the point. So why are we, what value does this bring us to, to, to grab this metric?
So if you're referring to the actual fall administration, so students are coming in for the, the first time into kindergarten. So some of these students may have been in pre-K programs. Some of them may have not been in pre-K programs. So we can certainly utilize it in that way. The other way that fast bridge is really most valuable is the instructional information that you get from that assessment. Because you then know what we need to do with students in order to, to help them gain the skills that they need to progress throughout the, throughout the year.
We do often, as Beth, as, as Ms. Roberts said, thank you, Buffy, look at how students for whom we've provided pre-K services to them, how ready they come, how ready they, they enter and how they, and how they perform. So it's an internal metric that we didn't bore you all with. The interim goal is based on low risk, but it is something that we use internally and Ms. Mrs. Foxworth, who's not here with us tonight, uses.
I was about to say, Ms. Foxworth would surely be interested in that data. Would you mind sharing that with the board in the, in the brief? I feel like that's a very, very relevant data point, especially when we're looking at budgeting our, our, our early education, yeah?
Absolutely. You have to have, you have to have metrics around pre-K and pre-K intervention in order to be able to see where kids are and see how you're doing with them. And right now she's actually looking at some Head Start, early Head Start data and it's that's very informative.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. We'll add it to the list.
Great, grateful for that.
Dr. Temple?
I'm okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions.
I was waiting for you to bring it home. Okay. Hearing no further questions. I appreciate it. And then we will move on to the next item, which is the North Charleston High School Conflict Resolution Career Development Mentoring and College Tutor Update. Ms. Watley, since you were the motion bringer of this, you want to?
I, I would actually defer to this, our strategic education.
I'm sorry. Ms. Bailey?
Okay. Well, we're gonna have Pastor Ravenel and Jonathan Burrell come forward to give the presentation.
Yes. How y'all doing today? Everybody all right? Y'all all right? Hey, y'all are tough bunch. No, but we're glad to be here. Some of the dialogue that I heard today is very relevant to what we're gonna present and we're gonna talk about. So starting off, a lot of us that you see behind us, we were parts of different organizations. We all came together a while back, like twenty-eighteen, we formed the United Black Men of Charleston County. What we wanted to do was actually assert ourselves and the educational process because we felt that we needed to take charge of our communities. And there was a lot of things that we saw that we felt like we could be the main driving force of bringing things to fruition and helping educators and students and parents to be able to bring some better outcomes than what they were seeing at that current time. One of the things that we understood is that our work was aspirational, right? Because it's kind of hard to quantify or put numerical value on some of the work that we do. We, when we first started off in North Charleston High School, it was a big gang problem. A lot of them can attest to that. We broke up plenty of gang fights. We took weapons off people. We pulled people out the hallways. We had to get kind of rough and tough sometimes and, and bring a message that, hey, you know what? We're gonna help the principal clean this school up. And that's what we did. And so our goal right here that I have up, one of the goals of the Combined Intervention Program, we put to support at-risk students through personalized mentoring, fostering academic achievement, emotional well-being and social competence by leveraging CCSD's priority strategies. So, um, next slide, we got a slide without turn. Do I turn it here?
Mr. Thrower, you know, Ms. Maggie, she'll, she'll do it for you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. So one of the things that we wanted to do was be able to quantify or bring some sort of data to show that what we are doing is working. So one of the things we started looking at are some of the key performing indicators that a lot of educators would want us to use and through speaking to staff members, they thought would be best for us to help us to put our point across. So a part of the Panorama Survey that we use, we, we have some of the results and I'm gonna kind of go down and actually show you how we've put together some programs that align with the strategies of CCSD for each particular line item. And then we introduce programs or certain things that we could do to help drive that number up. So I'm gonna start off with some of our gains and our successes and then we have areas of opportunities that I would like to expound on also. So the first thing is belonging, right? So in the sense of that, that concept, we wanted to make sure that the students feel valued. Because a lot of times, you know, students don't feel valued. They feel passed over. They feel looked over. So empowering them within that school community. So what we did is in our mentorship program that we have and all of these gentlemen right here, we, we stand by it. Our program, one of the things that we did in this particular situation to bring belonging is we paired our young students in with a lot of the older seniors who we felt had been through a lot of the problems and the situations that they would eventually incur. That made them feel that they belonged to the school. We wanted them to know, hey, you know what? This is your big brother, your big sister. If you have any problems, these are positive kids in the school who you can turn and speak to. That was really good and we, we do that. We've been getting some good feedback on that. As far as the mechanism for feedback, of course, we have numbers that students can call in the event you might, you know, see something, say something. A mechanism where, that we established to where kids that were having problems in school, they maybe felt like they were being bullied or something was going on that caused them a little bit of fear or consternation. They should be able to come to us. That helped them feel like they were belonging to an environment where people actually truly genuinely cared about them. So that's how we, we did see that our greatest increase in that seventeen points. And we will continue to drive that number up as we move forward. Next slide, please. Well-being. So well-being right here, satisfaction, happiness, prosperity, how do they feel, right? So one of the things that we did is we encouraged community service projects. We have a lot of outside organizations that we work with, nonprofit organizations who do wonderful things in the community. That sense of well-being and that mental stability comes when they can go and they can see positive things in the community that are being done by a lot of times peers or friends, our relatives, family, friends, loved ones. So we did that. So the workshops we have, stress management, people come in, talk about that, mental health awareness, some things that the kids can actually grab on. One of the things that we started recently doing, actually, I was doing this today. So when you start talking about chronic absenteeism, a lot of, I, I noticed that a lot of times the students will not update their power school and their contact information. So they might put fake numbers in or have it going somewhere else because they know they're gonna, they know you're gonna call. So if they know you gotta, know you're gonna call, you need to be able to make sure that the information is up to date. We crack down on that. Additionally, I like to call the fathers, right? Because sometimes, a lot of times, you got two households in, in a, in a family, right? You got the mother and father. They might live separate. From what I noticed, a lot of times I called the fathers, they didn't even know. Spoke to a father today. He said, man, I'm glad you called me. Nobody ever called me, right? And when you go and look at the list, sometimes you'll see all mothers listed. You rarely see the fathers. So what you do is just make sure the information is up to date, current, that we can speak to mother, father, grandmother, whoever. But I think that's very important, considering that we have absenteeism with fathers, fatherlessness in our community also. So those, that's something that I like to do, that I thought about that would help hit that area and give us a little more push to try to drive that number. Peer support groups, we have that also. Got a nice little group. When the guys come in, they know, we put them in peer support groups, kind of have them shadow with each other every day, talking to people, kind of having a safe space for friends. So that's how we've been trying to put things together to kind of help create a sense of well-being at the school. Next slide. That's actually up also too. Next slide. School climate. So the school climate, character, character of the school life, experience of students, parents, personnel. Like I said, we've had a, we've seen a real increase in that. To be honest, the gang culture is, was very, and it, you know, it still is. It, it's kind of our Achilles heel. And when you got a lot of gangs in there and you got a lot of people who pressuring young guys and young girls and doing certain things, that's a point of concern for us. So us as men, we get in through conflict resolution initiatives. We sit them down. What's going on? Like, let's talk. What do we need to do? Who's about to fight, right? See something, say something. The no snitch code, let's get rid of it. Let's see how we can make this school safe. And once they see that they have people there that's gonna say, you know what? Anything that goes down is gonna have to come through us first. That immediately helps build the sense of, of, of safety in the school and it affects the climate directly, even with the teachers, when they know we're there and they know that they have our support, they're gonna act a little different. They're not scared to tell the student, take your AirPods out. If I'm standing right there, she'll tell him, take your AirPods out, right? Because she knows I got her back. So that's what we've been doing to help actually build our, our, our school climate and to make it more of a safe environment for the kids to learn in. Like, next slide. Professional learning about SCA. Right here, we just basically share our experiences with students when we talk to them, with the teachers, to see how we can determine a lot of time if it's a skill or will issue. Especially in the credit recovery classes that we're in right now, that's one of the most things that we need to kind of assess whether it's a skill or will issue. A lot of times, you know, a student might have the skill, they might know how to do the work. They might, you know, understand it, but they don't have the will to drive the motivation and the desire to finish their work. So they're always behind. So what we do, we just get in there, kind of maybe talk to them about some things that may be negatively impacting them at home. And we just try to, you know, have these conversations and talk to the teachers about it. Sometimes they might tell me something they might not tell their teacher. But nevertheless, we get in there and we try to talk to the teacher to let them understand more of the mindset of the children. And it allows them to do their job a little when we just kind of, you know, bring our minds together to try to help and do something positive. Slide. Okay. Culture awareness in action. Now, this particular slide, this is where we, this is actually one of our points of interest where we had a negative, negative decrease with the survey. So with the cultural awareness, we just want to kind of improve relations and cultural climate in the classroom. We know that in gangs, you got a lot of black Hispanic beef, right? You got warfare between black and Hispanic students. They are in poverty-driven areas and sometimes you And sometimes you got people that don't like each other because they feel like you're different from them. I don't like you because you look different. You speak different. You talk different. You might be affiliated with a neighborhood that doesn't like our neighborhood. So what we try to end up doing is, A, bringing in people or speakers from different backgrounds who can talk, relate, people can look, ask questions. We've had people from police officers because a lot of times people don't like the police, right? We know that they don't like the police. So what do we do? We bring in an officer. Hey, let's talk about police community relations. Let's have these discussions. And by us bringing in more of a mixture of different people who they don't understand, we can have those tough conversations and hate and say, hey, listen, we might not be too far off on our ideologies. Let's just see how we can understand and relate to each other. We do that also facilitating discussion groups on current events. There's a lot of current events that sometimes draw us apart. And if we sit down and we have these tough discussions, we can sometimes come to an understanding of where we are divided at and try to bring the kids together. These are some of the most impactful and promising discussions that we have in our classroom. Another thing, we incorporate social awareness topics into our discussions and curriculum. Because social awareness, we need to understand how people feel, thought processes, patterns, what people do in their lives as far as, you know, being a part of a certain culture. So with that being said, um, we have decreased in that area. But as an area of opportunity, uh, there are certain things that we just need to continue to dig into to make sure that we drive this number in the right direction. That's it. Slide.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions to these fine gentlemen from any of the board members? Mr. Kelly?
Gentlemen, I I applaud you. Uh, you 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 are exactly correct that having men who understand what manhood is in the lives of young people is, in almost all situations, the 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 solution. When we can teach men to be men, we 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 can solve a lot of problems in our world. So I'm I'm very grateful that y'all are doing what you're doing. If I understand this correctly, y'all are a bunch of volunteers. Is that correct?
Yep, I never got, I mean, I can change that today, right?
You heard what Dr. Copley said.
I mean, at the end of the day, all of us started, all of us started out like that because, I mean, we weren't, we we, it wasn't really about the money necessarily. We just wanted to make sure. It was a lot of talk, right? Sometime a lot of people are just da-da-da-da chirp. But we wanted to get in and actually, you know, see what's going on and not to prolong the conversation. But uh, when I first started in, when I first started going into the school, uh, my mindset was, this is crazy, right? You know, we're suspending too many kids. Uh, you know, we're doing this or we're doing this. But then when you start getting in, sometimes, you know, I think those conversations are needed because you have too many times where you have so many bad actors coming in that you might have one person going and you're just destroying thirty other students. And these are the things that we still have issue with. We take issue with currently because we understand that these bad actors do the same thing they do in the judicial system. When the police, when they get locked up, the police let them out. They go shoot again. They're recidivists. They come back. They have no interest in, you know, doing what's right. And we see the same behavior in the school. And I think we've begun, we've gotten more aware of the fact that, you know, sometimes you gotta sit somebody down to timeout.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
I was one of the first one I grew, I went up in North Charleston High School. Because a lot of kids were being expelled from school. And I I didn't understood that. So I used to go to the fifty four and try to keep them in school. A lot of them were juvenile justice. And I knew Mr. Darby. I want to give him some gratitude here because he the man is about putting this school together. So Mr. Darby said, Mr. Tyler, why don't you come walk with me in the school and see why we are putting some of these kids out? When I went to North Charleston, I was appalled to what I saw. Kids are getting high in the stairway. The uh Monday, Tuesday, looked like New Orleans on a Friday and Saturday night. Kids are in the hallway fighting against teachers. The teachers couldn't even, couldn't even uh study in the class. They couldn't even study in the class. So this is where we started this process, buying intervention and putting this process together. And I'll tell you, it's like Mr. Jonathan said, it works. When you got, when young men see a father figure, someone can sit down with him, talk with him, and show him some love. He began to change. Some young men graduated from high school that didn't look like, they didn't thought they were gonna graduate. But with this group here, they did. And I tell you, it works. Ladies and gentlemen, it works.
Ye- yes, sir. I I wholly agree that I uh with that. So so I do have one question for you, fellas. Um, but a- a- along with just accolades, um, a- as much as I can heap on. Um, i- in regard to the the uh community service projects that you guys are doing, did I understand you correctly that you've got students leading those community service projects?
Yeah, a lot of times. Um, so one of the things that, you know, we do, and me being a big community advocate, um, we just find other organizations that are doing things and allow the students to get in and come together and bring together ideas of what they want to do, and then we make it happen.
Can can you give me a specific example of what what one was somewhat?
Paint murals, paint murals. Uh, we've had several nice big murals painted. Uh, we've actually had, I think, one in the Community Resource Center. We've had, man, we've had so many uh murals. They uh they enjoy doing painting projects, things like that. Um, just kind of like helping out with uh food giveaways, food drives and things of that nature. Anything community oriented, we have students um come in and put their mind into it and put projects. We have um, we got a pop-up shop. Uh, students actually helped us with that. The pop-up shop so the, you know, kids come around and they need certain items and things like that. Uh, that's a big part of it too. Also, we got the college tours too. We take our kids on the college tours. Uh, we just got back from state last week, right? State last week. Um, and one of the things that we wanted to do was uh career development. See, career development. Um, I think that aspect, when you start taking guys who've never left the city of North Charleston, they stay in the hood, stay in the streets, when you take them out and you let them see the bigger picture, a lot of time it expands the scope of their understanding. And they're like, wow, they're, they marvel. And they've never experienced that. Even if they don't want to go to college, at least give them the opportunity to have the privilege of seeing how that life is. And it gives them, like I said, a a greater perspective of who they are, what they need to do as far as their career path. So that's been a, that's been a boom too, right there.
Well, thank you all for the the effort that you're putting in. Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Robinson, do you have any questions?
I I just, I just want to say one thing about the group. Uh, we've been volunteering for about six years now. And when we go to the school, and my name is Mr. Townsend, and the kids know me by Mr. Townsend. But by us being there now, and all y'all might be familiar with this, they gave us a new name and they give me a new name and and I live with it because I love it. And they call me, and I'm quite sure they call all these guys too. And if you guys come around, be around a little while, they might call y'all the same thing. But they call us old school. And if you know what old school is, that is sweet to be called old school. Because coming up in the old school was very, very different from this new school. So when they call us or call me old school, I honor that. And and then I get right back on their case and we continue to have a wonderful day. So all y'all old school in here, come down and check out our new school with the old school.
I I I'm sorry, Mr. Calhoun and and Dr. Temple, did you have any questions?
Yes, I have questions.
Gentlemen, old school. New school's asking a question.
I'm I'm definitely old school, seven my full life.
Mr. Calhoun?
Definitely old school everywhere. Um, nah, but my my question actually just uh, and I think this will possibly go to Ms. Roberts as well. Uh, but how do we quantify the data that was given? Uh, I've been trying to click on the PowerPoint I was given that has the eyes next to everything. And I was not able to get to the data that was recorded. So how do we quantify the data? And then um, how was it recorded?
So the data actually came from the panorama survey. Um, that kind of like gave us an understanding of what we were actually doing. Like I said, it's kind of real hard to quantify some of the work that's actually done. So, you know, looking at specific key performing indicators is kind of difficult. So that was what we came up with, that we felt that we had a direct impact and our work actually was strategically aligned with the goals of CCSD.
And that's every day. This is not the every other day. This is five days a week we are in the school. Eight hours.
Okay.
Say that again. Okay, uh, I'm getting that in the mic. Say it again.
Oh, he said we're in school five days, five days a week, every day, eight hours a day.
So how are we actually collecting the data for? So like for the, so such as like the well-being, it's talking about sixty-three percent with a negative four or five um uh give or take with a five percent increase. How are we actually collecting that data?
So the PM, oh, you wanna, okay. Sorry.
So the data that he's providing is actually from the panorama survey. And so our teachers and our students um take that survey. And what he's um actually showing you is a comparison of two different things. So um, the first column is where, that's the data for the fall of twenty twenty-three, so this fall. And then the comparison in the next column is actually a comparison with um North Charleston High School and the district and what you're seeing. And then that last column is actually a comparison of where the school was in spring of twenty twenty-three as opposed to now in fall of twenty twenty-three. Does that help?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So and so what I guess my next question would be would be looking at the feeder patterns and then other schools involved because, of course, when we're looking at, um, when we're talking about the gangs that were involved and everything that were inside the schools, we're obviously going inside of DJA and Liberty Hill. So how we, how is the work that's happening at this school going into the feeder patterns? Or even into some of our, uh, some of our alternative schools?
I answer that, please, Dr. Copley.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Copley.
Thank you. So I wasn't asked, but I am going to brag. So one of the things I want to highlight is that North Charleston High School's discipline packets have gone down tremendously over the last several years. When I came into um the DAP office, we were getting anywhere on average between eight and twelve packets a week from North Charleston High School. As of this year, first and second quarter, North Charleston High School's packets have gone down to thirty-eight so far for first and second quarter. That is lore.
Wow.
That that definitely is to be celebrated if we're talking about comparison um and support. Secondly, when we look at the North Charleston School, the other North Charleston High School that's in that area, they are right on target for where Stahl High School would be at for uh packets. And I believe you guys have also been supporting Stahl High School as well. So I definitely want to make sure I highlight next time, ask me to help you and I can get you some data, right? So then the other part that's really great to, that you all should know is we used to have um an on-campus gun issue with North Charleston High School. We have had zero guns on campus for North Charleston High School this school year. So that's definitely to be commended because North Charleston High School used to be one of our leading schools with those weapons on campus. And then the last thing, and I'll be quiet, is that when Mr. Darby first arrived to North Charleston High School, really the behaviors that he was targeting was around that climate within the building. The disrespect, the profanity, the harassment, intimidation threats that were going towards, you remember that? Towards our teachers. That has completely shifted. Even the gang issues, and that's one term we don't like to use in the district, but we did have identified unorganized affiliations within our community. Even though they're existent, it's now turned back to what we saw when we were growing up, that the school is the the ground that you don't violate when you come into school. That is the safe place for where we need to address issues. And now we're talking about how do we address more issues outside in the community, which is why these gentlemen are, you know, definitely involved. And then I do want to clarify one thing. When he said roughhousing, because that kind of made me go, ooh, right? Like, we're not talking about hands-on approaches for our scholars. We're talking about giving them that stern conversation reminders that while we're old school, the expectation is that you are respecting all parties, regardless of age, regardless of gender, regardless of race. That expectation goes from the hat off to your belt on. If you don't have a belt, they're going to make sure you have a belt. Making sure that everything you need to be successful in school is there.
I'm just, can I ask Ms. Roberts a question? Now, this is North Charleston's um panorama dat- data for the entire school.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. So were you able to disaggregate one group's data?
We did not do any type of um disaggregation. This was actually, part of this work was actually provided by the school.
So this is showing the use of all of their wraparound services and how it affected the data.
Yes, I mean, I think we have a a network of supports um across our district, right? Um, so isolating some of those variables can be difficult at times. Um, I think some of the information that they've provided tonight, though, can help us um know what were some specific actions that they did.
Another thing I might add, so we're always looking for more feedback and ways that we can actually help quantify the work that we do. Like I said, it's 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 kind of tricky. It's kind of arduous because you, I mean, when things are aspirational like this, it's kind of hard to put a a a certain pinpoint it. But uh, any sort of feedback that somebody might have or you might have that can help us to, you know, be more efficient in keeping things on, we're all for that. That's what we want to do.
Mr. Calhoun, do you have any more questions?
I'm good. I can ask them in the board up there.
Uh, Dr. Temple?
Um, thank you, um, fellas, for your services um to the students. Um, I wa- you answered my question about how much time you're spending, five days a week, eight hours a day. Um, how many, how many people is that per day?
Six, six of us, um, three in the morning, three in the afternoon with the shift, eight to twelve, twelve to three thirty.
Will you please introduce yourself?
I'll pass the Ravenel from Combined Intervention.
Okay. And then when when do you meet? When are you meeting with these students?
So we pull our students. So what we do, it, some of it, what could it be, just some of this might give you a better idea. Um, what we do, we meet with our students. We have twenty students that we 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 just select. Um, some students are disciplined students, some are honor students. These are the students who we put in our conflict resolution classes. And these are the students we took on the fifteenth to the South Atlanta State Tour. These are the students that we're going to take with us to the Menacola Summit, Clemson Menacola Summit in April for three days. Um, and then we meet with these students. Every other Thursday, we have sessions with these students. On top of working with our teachers and then any student we see DM to be suspended or expelled, we automatically pull the suits, like the previous, um, like Mr. Jonathan and Mr. Tyler said. If we just see a student being disrespectful in the hallway, we pull that student. Uh, one thing we started uh years ago was no sagging campaign. Uh, when we see students coming to school with no belts on, if you're coming to our school, and and if you're coming to our school now, you would probably see every student with a belt on or no more sagging. If we're gonna give you one or two warnings, we're gonna talk to you about the sagging, then you're gonna spend that day in ISS. So nobody wants to stay in ISS. So these are, so it don't actually have to be uh um a certain group. We're just gonna come in the building in the mornings. If we see something that's not right, if we hear anything in the street, we met with, um, they talked about the gangs. So what we did in twenty eighteen, we met with gang members in the community. We had an open meeting. And what we said to the gang members, look, whatever issues y'all have, we're gonna keep it here and it's not gonna come back on the school ground. Since twenty eighteen, we have not had one gang fight at North Charleston High School. So any student, we 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 really don't care who it is. When we enter that building that morning, if we see something wrong, we just, we we kind of start a dialogue right there. And it could end up anywhere, actually.
Ms. Waters?
Yes, thank you all for your time. Um, and I know how much time you spend there. I've, you know, definitely seen you um out at North Charleston. I do have a que- I'm gonna make my comment as a point of privilege just about the entirety of the strategic education section. And this section actually on the regular board meeting is is normally called And this section actually on the regular board meeting is, is normally called uh student focus outcomes. Because it's normally at this meeting, not the COW, tied to how we're making progress toward goals and guardrails. And I just have a concern that today we weren't really able to assess that because in the first presentation, the data was so confusing that I couldn't, I personally couldn't really have any robust questions because I was more concerned about what am I reading, still am to some degree. And so really want to make sure, and while this is obviously really great tactics and really great activity that's happening inside of a school, we don't know how it connects directly to student outcomes. And so I want to make sure that this remain, I don't know why we changed the, the headers, but it's for the benefit of, you know, consistency for the public and also consistency in understanding what we're here to do as the board, which is to assess how what we're doing is accomplishing an end that is academic progress. Or one of the other guardrail pieces that we kind of try to keep um some of these things consistent. And this is not um meant to me, be diminishing, but just, you know, an offering that we try to really think about how we can craft this section so that we can have really productive conversations about outcomes and that additional information. Perhaps if it's to spotlight great work that's happening, it, it could potentially show up either earlier, and then these men could have spent a little less time here today, um, or, or something like that. And then again, just the ability to speak from a very um grounded perspective when we're approaching data is just important for us as a board.
So it's made as a point of order. Right, yeah.
Thank you.
And, and we'll address that. Ms. Waters? With this, uh, any question, Ms. Bailey?
I have a question, I have a statement, and I had to write it down. When I look at you, I just don't see mentors. I see grandfathers, fathers, big brothers. I see open windows of opportunity to achieve and be more than what these students can be and see in their own communities. I applaud you because I've heard and I have seen, I haven't been to North Charleston, but I've had three stu- graduate from North Charleston and three graduate from RB Stoll. And the culture and climate that you have perfected there is above and beyond reproach. So I thank you for being what God has called you to be, to stand up and show these young men accountability and that they will know that they can be anything that they, they put their minds to. Anything that they want to achieve is in their grasp. And I thank you for that. And I saw your Facebook post with the students that you took to um, to South Carolina State. And let me tell you, you don't even know the doors that you have opened up for them to see beyond their communities, that they have hope and they have a future. So I thank you and I applaud you for that.
Thank, thank you, and, and, and want to say that, that, that we extend the invitation to any board member, whether you're district, and it's, and district three or district four, any board member, anytime, uh, on behalf of Mr. Darby, we extend the invitation. Come in um, and, and, and tour our school, come and sit among our sessions. Uh, we have another session, I think, on March seventh. Um, I think we have another session then on March fifteenth. Uh, but anytime, feel free to, to come and see what we're doing at North Charleston High School and also what we're doing at Stoll High School also. Again, thank you for, for allowing us to come.
Ms. Watley? Oh, Ms. Robertson, did you have a follow-up, yeah, Ms. Watley?
I just want to um, first of all, thank the, the district and my fellow board members for working with me collaboratively to allow me to have this placed on the agenda. I felt that it was really important that everybody have the opportunity to hear about the great work that you've been doing. It's one thing for me to follow the work that you're doing, to have private conversations with you and the superintendent and others in the district about what you're doing and advocate that uh you, you all be supported in what you're doing. I feel that it's so incredibly vital, what you're doing, and um I would love to see what you're doing funded and expanded to the other schools in the district that, that are having similar challenges, that you all uniquely understand and can uniquely speak to, especially when you've lived it, you've walked it, you're the evidence of a turned around, changed life, and, and you're coming back now for free to keep other kids from following in the, the foot, the, 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 the pipeline. I just sat in a, a policy class, I'd like to see Mr. Thrower um be a part of that board as well for, on the state level um about the prison to pipeline policies and how things like that um can create um a situation for, for kids who don't know how to break out of a dysfunctional cycle that, that they see every day. And I do believe that giving them an opportunity to see a vision of what life could be if they work hard and achieve and stay focused. So I just appreciate that you all are there in the trenches for free, doing the work.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to audit and finance, uh, Mr. Calhoun, I'm, I'm gonna read um a uh procedural recommended, recommendation on how to proceed with this next section. So as I read it, and then I'll ask for any thoughts or comments on you since you are the chairman of audit and finance. Um, as we move to the audit and finance report, we have several substantial action items outlined in the meeting agenda that were posted for public access. To expedite our procedure and maintain its efficiency, what I'm proposing is we reference the motion by their titles and briefly summarize the key points. The detailed and comprehensive text of each motion can be found in the audit and finance meeting um recording and in our meeting agenda for tonight's meeting, and is available to all board members in the public. This approach allows us to navigate through the agenda items efficiently while assuring that the complete information is readily accessible. If there are no objections, we will proceed with this approach for the audit and finance report. With any members um seeking complete details of the motion, it's good, yours encouraged to refer to the agenda available to the public. And in other words, reading through the motions, we will still have the discussions, but a lot of these uh recommended actions and motions go on quite extensively. Do you, do you see any issues with that, Mr. Calhoun?
No, I actually agree with that. Um, again, I would recommend anybody who would like deeper understanding to go to the audit and finance meeting. When we get to the information actions, uh, oh, oh, information items, I would um appreciate if Ms. Carlin or, and I believe um Mr. Barrowe would give a shorter, but not a more detailed uh explanation to those uh items when we, as we move forward. So uh, yeah, I, I, I agree with what you put for, uh, every, all the action items that we have going for, I believe it was like six or so. Um, I, I believe it was like six or so reallocations or whatnot that needed to go through um that uh we should move forward on the, with the shorter side of the, uh, uh, of the explanations.
Do any other board members have any objections or comments on the procedure? With that, we will move on to um item uh six A, which is the spring twenty twenty-four bond anticipation note and bands. Um, and there's a motion to approve the spring two twenty twenty-four bond anticipation note. Do I have a motion?
I can move.
Do I have a second?
Next second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I would like to bring the item to vote. Dr. Temple, can you hear me? Dr. Temple, are you still on, streaming with us?
Yes, I'm still here. Um, the vote didn't come up, but yes, my vote is yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes. Um, on to item six B, which is the fixed cost of ownership uh for the fiscal year twenty-four budget reallocation. The motion is to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. Item six C is the fixed cost of ownership for FY twenty-five project list. The motions to approve prioritized list of projects under the fixed cost of ownership fiscal year twenty-five project list as submitted. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly?
I, I, I would like to understand where one point three million dollars over budget goes towards software. So.
Rocky.
Would you like me to address that?
Please.
So in general, the increase in software was related to programs that are no longer going to be funded by S R. Uh, overall, there's probably, well, it's this book right here of the different software programs, and it's broken down by programs and departments. So I, I could certainly go through this book page by page, individual line, but it's more of uh program softwares that were no, no longer funded with S R. That represented the general increase of over one million. I, 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 I'm not asking you for line by line, Mr. Barrowe, I don't, I don't hate you that much. Um, the, the, the question.
Oh, gosh.
Words, are those softwares uh directed at um, at, at like student education type softwares? Are they, are they featured academic? Yeah, yes, sir. So in, in general, the uh software budget request is for fifteen million in software. Ten million of that is directly educationally related. So sixty-seven percent of the funds go toward software supporting our schools. I see, thank you, and you know I love you, that was sarcastic for those that weren't aware. No other questions?
Mr. Calhoun, did you have any questions or further clarification on the list?
No, I was gonna go to Mrs. Naraki, um, uh, but uh famous Barrowe did it for what we need.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we will move to the vote.
Yay.
And the motion passes. On to item six D, fixed cost of ownership fiscal year twenty-four budget reallocation transportation. The motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown in the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. On to item six E, the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-two capital programs phase four sales tax capital maintenance budget reallocation. The motions to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, quick question for Mr. Barrowe. With the EB Ellington project, will that begin as soon as um the summer or would that move in the fall?
Mr. Hamer, if you're in the line, can you let us know if that EB Ellington?
Yes, yes, that will be done this summer, it will be complete before the, the uh beginning of the school year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. On to item six F, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight capital programs phase five sales tax capital maintenance budget reallocation. The motion is to approve capital maintenance budget reallocation as shown on the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. On to item six G, fixed cost of ownership fiscal year twenty-four budget reallocation. This is the information technology, the motion is to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. On to item six H, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight capital programs phase five sales tax budget reallocation. Uh, the motion is to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. On to item six I, donations greater than ten thousand.
I still move.
Um, the motion is to approve donations in excess of ten thousand, as listed.
I think this is great, I love donations.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
The only discussion I have is, um, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, the materials that are being donated are, are useful. Um, because I've been in situations where we've received donations and then it was just a lot for the district to manage or the school to manage, and they weren't useful, so that's my only concern.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you, Dr. Temple. We are actually um going to donate the items to the teacher supply closet so that teachers can come and get items for their teach, their classrooms and their students and their peers as needed. That, that's, um, your concern was a similar one as staff. So, um, we hope we've got a, 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 a plan worked out to make sure that the um items get to where they're most needed.
Any further questions?
I just want to point out for the sake of comedy that we are getting two hundred and sixty-six waste management objects. Is that trash cans? We're getting two hundred and six trash cans?
That's what we assume.
Waste management, I, I, I love it, I love it.
It was our, it was, you see Mr. Barrowe smirking, we had this very similar conversation.
I love it.
He's blaming it on the Navy, but I.
Well, you know, the Navy, those Navy guys, they do kind of have their own way about doing things.
Any further questions?
This is everything that I questioned at audit and finance, um.
Yes, you did, Mr. Calhoun, you prepared us for this moment.
I, I missed it, Mr. Calhoun, do you have a question, what answer?
I have no question, we can move forward.
Thank you, uh, we'll take it to vote, please.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. And the motion passes. Um, on to item six J, which is purchases and contracts greater than two hundred and fifty thousand. The motion is to approve the list of purchases and contract greater than two hundred and fifty thousand through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take it to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. Onto item 6K, the ESSER update. Ms. Carlin?
Excuse me, Mr. Kabowski, before we get to Ms. Carlin, I would just like to say for the next three, for K, L, and M, I would ask for a more robust update as opposed to a more robust update as opposed to what we would usually get. So for the ESSER update, the monthly capital project support, as well as the monthly financial update, go ahead and give the report that you gave at Audit and Finance because we can go back and watch that, but just give us a more detailed report as opposed to what we would usually get.
And I think, Mr. Calhoun, how we can also handle that too, is in yours and Ms. Roberson, my follow-up on any of the questions to make sure, because I know there were questions following that meeting. So I agree with you wholeheartedly. Ms. Carlin?
Thank you, sir. So through the end of December, we have spent $115.3 million, and what we have remaining is $23.9 million. I'm happy to report that we did get approval today from the State Department on the second ESSER bonus, and so that will be paid out on March 22, and that's around $10.5 million. So other than that, we recently filed a claim for the October, November, and December expenditures. So what you see over to the side is reimbursement to date, $95.3 million. We'll get reimbursed for that if we haven't already been reimbursed for it. Any questions?
Mr. Calhoun?
No, thank you, Ms. Carlin. Ms. Huggins, would you like to give your part of the report on it?
Are you referencing the ESSER impact reports, Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, please.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that. So just to update the board, we did have, I think I may have shared some of these details previously, committees of three that reviewed the ESSER impact reports. There were approximately 140. Each reviewer could issue up to 30 points, times three reviewers, equaled 90. Over the weekend, and I shared with you, thanks to Mrs. Roberson, a folder that included all of the ESSER impact reports by project, if you'd like to review them. You also have the rubric whereby you can see how the reviewers scored or how they gauged each project. We still are working internally on revenues and expenses to determine where we need to draw that putt line in regards to what programs and FTEs get funded and what will be below the line. As we've shared, we will work to prioritize those projects and FTEs that have made the most impact. We are looking to formally bring at this point a request to the board as part of the budget package to be able to fund schools based on not only poverty, but also the number of multilingual learners and special needs students in schools across the system. So we do think many of the FTE points that have been requested by principals will be absorbed in that process, and it will allow principals to prioritize what they need for their buildings, which is what you've seen earlier here with how Mr. Darby has prioritized some of the efforts in his school, not necessarily the funding, but we want principals to have that autonomy. But as Mrs. Waters asked in a prior meeting, we are going to develop some guardrails around how those points are used to ensure that they impact the classroom and students the most. And so, Mr. Calhoun, we're still somewhat in a holding pattern as we wait on revenue projections to know exactly what sort of cuts we'll need to make and where we'll draw the line, but we do anticipate bringing that to you, we are hopeful, by the March budget workshop. And Mrs. Roberson and Mr. Calhoun have committed to working with us on that to ensure that it is thorough, and it will give you the detailed information that you need at the point that we have it. So, Mr. Calhoun, does that hit the high points for you and the board?
Yes, thank you, and I have questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberson?
Ms. Carlin, this report is as of December 31, and you may have answered this already, but, and I could have been doing some thinking of something else. ESSER III is a total of $163 million. So far, we've had $95 million back. You said that we just got, did we just get another reimbursement in?
I would need to confirm that with staff. I knew a claim was filed in the last week or so, so we may have already been reimbursed for it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it look like we are close to getting? I know we're going to sunset in September, and so we're, let's call it March. Does it look like we're going to get $163 million back? I know everything has not been, something, some funds are encumbered and not been spent.
Yes.
But what we've actually spent, does it look like we are going to get those monies back?
I believe what you're asking me is, are we going to be able to spend the whole $163 million by September? And that is our goal. We're aggressively working with the different feeder patterns, as well as, you know, some of the other schools to try to help them spend that money as quickly as possible. It's an all hands-on-deck approach, really, between finance procurement and also school staff, excuse me, school staff.
Okay. And if we spend it up to the date of September, we still can file after September for our money.
Yeah, there's some guidelines there that I don't believe Clady is on the call that she's more familiar with than I am, but there is a cutoff date, and so we're monitoring that as closely because we don't want to get too close to that cutoff date. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good question.
Any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Waters?
Ms. Carlin, is there any thought around filing for an extension?
So that has been coming up a lot lately, especially with other school districts in the state that are having, that are running into issues with spending money because of whether supply, demand, or, you know, just services aren't able to be turned around that quickly. The answer we have continued to get from the State Department is that the federal government is not extending this deadline. Something may change within the next few months, but we are continuously being told no because they're going forward and asking for extensions as well with the federal government. And the answer they keep getting back is no, not at this time.
Any other questions?
I have one for the superintendent. On the impact studies, because I started looking at them, and I can see, you know, there's been a lot of thought process going through, and I saw the rubrics that has been done, and I may have missed it. Is there a documentation right now that has it where, because I know in the presentation at Audit and Finance, you were talking that, you know, you had one project that had reached the high point of 90 points, and then there was that 70-point low point. How do I look at this, or how do my fellow board members look at it and see the grading level?
So, Mr. Kabowski, we are happy to share with the board the grading, the metrics that were associated with each. We haven't shared that, those back necessarily with the principals yet.
Got it.
So if you'll give, if you'll give staff and me a week just to be transparent with principals, we want to do that, to let them know where they, God bless you, where they fall out on the scoring, we can certainly privately share that with the board as well. So we'll put that on our list.
Because I do think that that impact study is going to be huge for the next Cal meeting, for the budget workshop, you know, as we go forward. I know there was one other item that we had talked about. I'm just for the evening, I'm drawing a blank, but it'll come to me, but that was one of the key ones because I can look at the reports, you know, they're well-written, the thought process that goes behind it, but then trying to figure out exactly when you look at 142 of these eventually, it's going to be real important. So anyway.
Just give us a week or so to share and meet with principals if they have questions about where their proposals.
Fully understand.
And we'll be glad to share them with you as well.
Ms. Wally?
I believe we've gone over this before in the past, but I'm just going to ask for clarity's sake. How much of the ESSER funds have we not spent yet? And is it spoken for?
Well, I do not have the January, I do not have the January report with me, but it is, it is complete. But through the end of December, we had $23 million that was just sitting in budgets that had not been accounted for, but we knew that $10.5 million of that was going to go towards the, towards the second bonus. And so, right now, and we know that schools are planning to spend this money, but I would say right now, it's probably a little less than $14 million that's not, that's just kind of just sitting there that hasn't been encumbered or accounted for at this point. But I have to caveat and say, I know schools are working towards spending that, whether they are going through the procurement process or collecting bids or collecting quotes, things like that.
I thought it was around that $23 million, so.
There are plans for, Ms. Wally, as Ms. Carlin suggested. In fact, we had to ask, we had to look for money related to find the money for the teacher bonus. So we know that many of the funds are encumbered, and the monies are planned for. We're just having to make sure that our school-based folks in some of our departments know that, you know, time's a ticking.
I appreciate you guys going back over it. I do remember us having this discussion when we voted to use the ESSER three.
Yes, ma'am. It just, it took some time to find the money, and the last thing you want to do is leave money on the table.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Hearing none, we. Dr. Temple? Any questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item L, the monthly capital project report, December 2023. Ms. Costello?
Thank you and good evening. I'll give you some highlights for our December capital projects report. I'm really excited. I'll know that our sales tax revenues came in higher than our projection by about 300, over $350,000, which brings our year-to-date, we're still about half a million, little over half a million below our projection. So cross your fingers for a good month, next month, and continuing. Just wanted to mention all the capital programs, sales tax programs are underway and moving. We are in year two, about to be in the year two, the 2023 through 2028 program. We're there now. This report is December, but year two started in January. And I just wanted to mention that fixed cost of ownership for '24 is wrapping up, and the deadline for the spending is at the beginning of May. And I'm really grateful and thankful, as I know everyone who is involved in the fixed cost of ownership program, that the board has approved the ban funding and the 2025 project list. So thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll open up the table for any questions. Any questions from the board? Mr. Calhoun?
No, thank you, Ms. Costello.
You're welcome.
Hearing none, we will move on to item 6M, which is the monthly financial update, December 2023. Ms. Carlin?
Yes, thank you, sir. Just real quick overview, revenues are coming in over budget by about $17.4 million. Most of that is due to local tax revenues that are coming in higher than we originally projected. As far as the expenditures, due to mostly vacancies, we are going to come in under budget with expenditures approximately about $8.9 million. That number could increase as we go through the, as we continue to move through the year and not fill vacancies, and if we continue to say not spend all of our purchase services and supply monies that we've talked about, that we historically have not spent. So right now, we are looking at averaging, excuse me, adding approximately $11.9 million to our fund balance as of right now.
Any questions of Ms. Carlin? Mr. Calhoun?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Dr. Temple?
I'm okay.
Hearing none, our next order of business is item seven. It is to convene into executive session to receive legal advice on matters involving proposed contractual agreements, one involving a charter school, student placement, pending or potential legal claims, and other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. We have seven matters to review to the uniqueness of each U issue. It is hard to give an estimate as to how long this session's going to be, hopefully short. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor of moving into executive session?
Aye.
Voiceover is good. We're in executive session.
Dr. Temple, can you hear us? There we go. He's on mute. That's perfect. Mr. Calhoun, are you on?
Yeah.
I'm here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are into general session. Onto item... You're too quick, Trudy. We're good. The motion passes. We're back into general session. Onto possible actions out of executive sessions. We'll move on to item 10A. I'd like to make a motion to approve the charter renewal application of Carolina Voyager charter school and to direct legal counsel to negotiate a 10-year contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote.
Yeah, I would just like...
Wait a minute. I just wanted to be sure that the contract comes back to the board.
Mr. Calhoun?
I was gonna express the same sentiment.
It was confirmed.
It was confirmed.
Just want to put that out. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll bring it to vote.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Onto item 10B. I'd like to make a motion to overturn the District Four Constituent Board's decision and have the student placed at the Turning Point Academy until completion of the 45-day program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Trudy is asking you to... She's trying to type.
It's slower next time. That's okay. That's fine. Dr. Temple?
No.
And the motion passes. Onto item 10C. I'd like to make a motion to uphold the District 10 constituent board decision.
It's a move.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to... I'm sorry, Mr. Calhoun.
Back end.
Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move it to vote.
Yay.
And the motion passes. Item 10D. It's a motion to uphold the District Two constituent board decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. And the motion passes. Item 10E. I'd like to make a motion to allow the student to remain enrolled as an outer county resident until the student completes the 23-24 school year with no tuition and must reapply for the 24-25 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will move on for vote. Read to vote.
Yay.
Excuse me, Mr. Gabowski. This is for 23-24 or 24-25?
This is just to remain in...
For the remainder of the year.
The remainder of the year.
And must reapply for 24-25?
Right. And he would... And must reapply for 24-25.
Okay. Thank you.
And the motion passes. Item 10H. I'd like to file a motion to decline the settlement offer in the leading proceeding discussed by legal counsel in executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd like to bring it to vote.
Yay.
I'm sorry. Did we miss one?
Oh, we missed...
Yes, we did. And I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
Yes, it was a yea. Yes, it was a yea. And the motion passes. Onto item 11, policies. 11A. And the subject, the question before the board is the naming of facilities of the new D9 Elementary School. The motion for consideration is a motion to, the motion is to consider the recommendation of the naming committee for the new D9 Elementary School to be named Johns Island Elementary School with the caveat of honoring key Johns Island historical figures discussed by the naming committee during the naming process within the school or campus, including but not limited to Esau.
Esau.
Esau and Janie Jenkins. John and Mattie Washington.
Hermina.
Hermina, Trey.
Trey I.
Trey I. And William B. Saunders. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Roberson?
Yes, I'm not sure when it's proper, but I'd like to offer a friendly amendment.
And-
It's proper now. I believe, go ahead and offer.
It is proper?
It is proper.
Okay. First, let me thank the naming committee for the hard work that they've done. Their time and efforts were very valuable, and I think it is, we need to recognize that. So, thank you, everyone that served on the naming committee. I would like to offer a friendly amendment to their recommendation to name the school on Johns Island in D9, the Esau and Janie Jenkins Elementary School, keeping the caveat that the naming committee offered with the rooms to be recognized to the other historical figures, John and Mattie Washington, Hermina Trey I, and William B. Saunders.
Second.
I know, Captain, we're going on this one first. Is there any discussion on the friendly amendment? Amendment, amendment, sorry, amendment. Okay.
Well, with the amendment, I would like to say, as a historian myself, I would like to see, and I would definitely put up that we definitely need to go ahead and honor Esau and Janie Jenkins on Johns Island. And I do believe, when we look at the votes of the original, the original votes from the first vote, that's what they went for on the naming committee, and I completely agree that we should go ahead and honor those, honor those first votes and put it, put it, put this forward.
I, I have a question. So, I thought the vote was 10-2. Was there a different vote, Mr. Calhoun?
There were two sets of votes.
Okay, and they were?
The first set of votes went for Esau Jenkins. I've, I do believe that we should go ahead and honor Esau and Janie Jenkins for the work that, the, I absolutely honored the, the work that Janie just put on Johns Island, including Esau Jenkins as well.
Ms., according to, oh, I'm sorry, I need to be recognized.
Yeah, I recognize, Ms. Roberson, I'm sorry.
Ms. McKinney, the email that we received said that the last vote was 10-2, but I believe according to the minutes of the naming committee, the last vote was 8-2.
Okay.
But they were-
Those are the two he's referring to, the 10-2 and the 8-2.
I'm referring to the-
No, he's referring to a different vote, the first, an earlier vote.
The 13 vote that went for Esau Jenkins initially.
The naming committee voted three times. The first two times, it was for Esau Jenkins. I believe it was, Ms. Denny, do you have the votes?
Yes, ma'am. On the first round, there were two votes for Esau Jenkins Elementary School and one vote for Esau Jenkins at the Johns Island Elementary School campus on the first round. On the second round, there were two votes for Esau Jenkins Elementary and seven votes for Johns Island Elementary.
I, I, I'm a little confused. Could you, could you go through that one more time? Sorry.
Yeah. The first vote, the first vote, what were the schools again?
So, on the first round of voting, there were seven in-person votes for Johns Island Elementary and two emailed votes for Johns Island Elementary, totaling nine votes for Johns Island Elementary. There were two in-person votes for Esau Jenkins Elementary, totaling two votes for Esau Jenkins Elementary. There was one in-person vote for Esau Jenkins Elementary at the Johns Island campus, totaling one vote. And there was one vote, I'm sorry, zero votes for Johns Island Elementary at the Esau Jenkins campus. That's the first round.
Ms. Denny.
There- Hold on, please allow her to finish.
Are you not finished, Ms. Denny?
No, yes, ma'am, I am.
That's, that's what I thought. There's a document in front of us that has Esau Jenkins with 13 votes at the tally. This was sent to, this was in board docs. And Ms., yeah. It was from November 16th, 2023, and it showed 13 votes. But I, while you reconcile that to what you have, or someone, I do just wanna say, though I don't personally know the history, I had to be educated about it. I think that when we, when we named these schools, we really should be honoring the history that is, that exists in the community. And from my understanding, the reason that it ended up in the end being Johns Island Elementary is because there was a little bit of concern about which family would be honored. I don't think, though, that that should take away from the fact that there are people who've made significant contributions, and to sort of homogenize it all and call it Johns Island Elementary School is something that diminishes the contribution of many great folks. And I would defer to, you know, Mr. Calhoun, who's the actual historian on this point, but I think it would be awful for us to just give someone like Esau Jenkins a room in that building, especially when we have campuses across our, our system that are named for people who have made far fewer contributions than Esau and Janie Jenkins did to, in Johns Island, from my understanding. And again, I'm advocating for what I've heard, trying to take that position as a board member. But I think that, I don't know that it would take anything away to name the primary campus with the larger name and still do the rooms as Ms. Roberson has shared.
Absolutely. And, and I'm, and I'm sorry, Ms. Denny, I, I'm looking at the vote from November 16th, 2023, and you could tell me if I'm wrong or whatnot, but it definitely says that Esau Jenkins Elementary had a tally of 13 votes. And that was the highest number of votes, with the next number of votes being Johns Island Elementary on, with 12. And also on that, it says like, for Johns Island, allow a space to honor Esau Jenkins and Ruth Evans. Also incorporate the other individuals mentioned during the meeting, possibly name the library of Esau Jenkins of honor. I, I, as a board member, I don't wanna do that again. We've seen how that went when we start looking at the naming of Camp Road Elementary, uh, uh, Camp Road Middle School with Jay Arthur Brown. And then also, I would definitely wanna put out there that, you know, when we're looking at the the bullet points under Esau Jenkins, it says known, the first bullet point is known for his work with September, with Sept- Septum Clark, the emphasis on the E, Septum Clark. That's very reductive. I, we, I, I'm not down for the help children attend school, well-known. The place that I work at, the Avery Research Center for African-American History and Culture, we hold his collection. When the Smithsonian came for his work to be, to be put up inside of the National, the National National Museum for African-American History and Culture in DC, they came to the Avery. For those first two bullet points, that's very reductive. He did way more work. And then even to, to put that even, to put that even forward, Janie Jenkins did way more work for the people of Johns Island. We need to go ahead and honor these folk. Esau and Janie Jenkins on that island. And that's not just reducing it to Johns Island. We're looking at, at Estor, we're looking at Waumala, we're looking at Johns Island. Let's go ahead and name this, this institution that will last for years for Esau and Janie Jenkins.
I would just like to say that both Esau and Janie Jenkins are very prominent people on Johns Island. They've been recognized in the Smithsonian, our institute, the African-American Institute. And if you look at the Johns Island schools, those schools have been named after prominent people, and I can't think of anybody who is more prominent than Esau and Janie Jenkins.
There's some confusion on this. It said they had a vote 13-2. Ms., Ms. Watley?
Ms. Denny, well, and, and I speaking of honoring them on James Island, I mean, Esau Jenkins was like the only name that I recognized on this list of names, but I'm very familiar with the work that he's done. But it's my understanding, he, he is honored in the Smithsonian as well as a building on Johns Island and the bridge that connects Johns Island and Waumala Island. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware of the Esau Jenkins Memorial Bridge that connects Johns Island and Waumala Island. I'm also aware of Esau Jenkins Village being built on Johns Island currently. It's currently under construction. I am aware of the Progressive Club, which isn't necessarily named for Esau Jenkins, but I am aware of the Progressive Club on Johns Island. I'm also aware of the display in the National African-American Museum of History and Culture. If I may, I'm happy to share with the board an overview of the process, but I don't wanna be out of order.
That was, that was actually the next thing I wanted to ask you. Can you walk us through how all of this has transpired? Because there seems to be some confusion about the unfolding events November and now, and the feedback that we've received from people who actually worked on
Yeah.
the naming committee.
Can you, can I be recognized?
Well, we're, we're right.
But, but I don't think that there's confusion.
But, but, excuse me, I've got the floor.
Let, let her finish, darling. Go, go ahead. Can you, when you're finished, go ahead, finish.
Ms. Denny, she's answering me.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. So, on the November 16th meeting, the committee was voting to determine which names were to move forward. At the November 16th meeting, Esau Jenkins did receive a tally of 13, so I just wanted to clarify that one piece from earlier. That was at the meeting in November. So, then, the committee met and on December 6th narrowed down the potential names to three and decided that they would receive some research, which is also in the attached document that you have. And then on the 31st, those two rounds of votes were the rounds that I read earlier, and that was at their final meeting.
So, and I guess that's where I get my confusion from. Where did the research come from?
That was done by a CCSDP member in our, in our facilities department. Capital Programs, I'm sorry, not facilities.
Mr. Calhoun, I'm gonna let Ms. Watley have the floor for a second. Go ahead.
So, Ms. Denny, so what you're saying is that there was, okay, so if there were 13 votes on November, and then you said they, they came back for another vote in September, and then again recently?
November, December, and January.
So, if, if why was there a progression away from the first vote?
As I understand it, from reading the minutes and from speaking to the delegate from my office, I believe that the committee weighed heavily policy FF on school naming, which indicates, or facility naming, rather, which indicates that geography, generally, the board prefers to name school sites and facilities for recognized geographical areas. However, if the recommendation is to name a school for a person, the honorary should be a person of special significance and/or the person has made an outstanding contribution. I believe that the committee's conversation hinged on, generally, the board prefers to name school sites and facilities for recognized geographical or, or excuse me, geographical areas. As I understand it, the committee was very much focused on having an inclusive name that could signify the entire committee. That is, I'm repeating what was shared with me. And so, I just wanted to share that and provide that as insight.
So, it's my understanding that, well, walk us through the process of how we came up with this naming committee and, well, once, once you answer that, then I'll go to my next question.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of privilege, please.
How come everybody keeps trying to take the floor from me? I have-
Motion of privilege takes precedent.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, the motion of privilege takes precedent. Your motion is?
I move that we postpone this to the next scheduled board meeting.
I, I have to agree.
A second.
I, I, I have to agree for this reason, and, and Ms. Denny, I'm totally confused on this. I am personally in favor, I, I look at what we did with Lucy Beckham, we didn't call it the Mount Pleasant High School. I mean, and yet, at the same time, I think there's, this is not clear. I think this needs to be discussed at Cal with a better presentation. I, I think Mr. Calhoun brings up a good point. I even think you bring up a good point, that, you know, there were 13 votes for these individuals. I just, right now, I, I think I have to agree with Mr. Kelly's motion. It's been second, and I think we need to vote on it.
Can I just say something?
Yes, Ms. Roberson.
I'm very disheartened that we've gotten to this because this was just a recommendation. I think that we have, you know, taken the committee's recommendation that was in, they were put together in an advisory role to make a recommendation to us. But now, we are making it a compulsory action. They were making a recommendation. When committees work, they're supposed to go through the weeds and bring a recommendation, and it's up to the board to make the final decision. I understand why you want to delay it, but I think that we don't really have to. If we understand that it's just a recommendation coming from them, we thank them for their work and their time. We didn't send this to consent because we wanted to get community input. And so, we received some community input, and now we still can't make a decision. And so, I think that we are now giving the committee the power of the board.
And Mr. Gabowski, if I can speak, I will say, I absolutely agree with Ms. Dunmire. But then also, if we do push this forward, I would like to talk to whoever did the research, because if the research was coming about one of the names, or even two, three of the names, be it Bill Saunders, Esau Jenkins, or John and Mattie Washington, they would have to have come through me. And I have not seen any of this through my regular job. Because I, I hold their collections. So, I would like to say, if we are going to push this forward, I would like to get all of the information forward when it comes forward, uh, uh, when, when it comes to the board.
Well, that's what I was attempting to do. I was attempting to get all of the information.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, but I can't, I can't-
Everybody keeps interrupting me.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Calhoun, let Ms. Watley speak. Hold, hold on, Mr. Callan, let Ms. Watley speak.
I'm tired of being shut down, I keep trying to speak, and I keep being interrupted. I was trying to draw all of the information out from Ms. Denny, so that we would clearly understand how everything unfolded, because people are wanting to table this because they're confused, they don't understand. Well, I'm trying to get it all clear. So, Ms. Denny, how did we end up with this naming committee?
I'm sorry, are we debating the motion?
See, and you're interrupting me again.
Just, just
Let her fin, let Leah finish her question.
Done this to me all night.
Go ahead, go ahead, finish your question. We're gonna vote on the motion for postponement. This is discussion on the motion to postpone. Please, finish.
Ms. Denny, would you mind answering me, thank you?
Yes, ma'am. One constituent district board member, the associate superintendent of the learning committee or their designee, principals of the schools, in some cases, there's more than one school being discussed, one or more community member or leader, one or more appropriate staff member, and either the executive director of communications or their designee. And so, the committee was comprised of individuals fitting those, those categories.
Her policy.
Her process.
And in your opinion, is this the normal size of a naming committee? Because when I looked at it, it looked like a lot of people that were representative by the community at large.
This committee had 28 original members compared with Lucy Beckham, which had 22, Camp Road, which had 15, Deer Park, which had nine, and Carolina Park, which had 10.
So, why, so, why so many people on this particular committee?
It evolved through the nomination process. We sent nominations out to the school principals and constituent boards, and the committee just seemed to have a broader, a broader group.
Would you say that it was a diverse group that represented, that represents the community as a whole?
I would say that.
So, everybody, everybody's voice was heard that chose to participate?
I would say it was a diverse group, yes.
I was concerned that
Ms. Temple?
I wa, I said, I was concerned that there were a number of people on the committee who did not participate. Did they give a sense of why they didn't participate with this wonderful opportunity?
I'm not aware of that, Dr. Temple.
Any further discussion?
I just have one more comment. I attempted to bring this up to discuss it at the Cal, but other board members didn't want to, they wanted to hear from members of the community. So, that's why it got voted and moved here. I'm okay with delaying it again until the following Cal. But, you know, we were already in the midst of beginning the conversation, and it just seemed disingenuous to only hear one side tonight and then to continue it over, especially when I was right in the middle of attempting to be heard myself. But with that said, I'm, I'm okay with delaying it.
Yes, Ms. Waters.
Just, I want to just add that my interest in the delaying is not actually because anything's confusing or anything like that. It's actually just because it's late, and it sounds like we're not going to reach consensus is the concern. But I do want to say that I'm in full support of Ms. Dunmire's, Ms. Roberson's. Ms. Roberson's comments that it is a recommendation, and we do have to exercise our own judgment sometimes on this case. And I think that, you know, I'm not sure why a process would have gone through three different votes. That, to me, is a bit problematic, because why wouldn't it have just stopped at the first vote? I don't think that we should be naming it Johns Island Elementary School, because we do name schools for individuals. That said, it seems like it's the desire of the board to table it and come back, because we can't reach consensus, but I do think it's unfortunate.
Can we, any further discussion?
Our final thing was, would be that, yes, we can go ahead and postpone this vote. However, if we are going to put forward a couple names, please come and actually get the history that is widely available for any name that's put forward, where it's actually at. We have it, you can go to the family, or you can come to where the papers are held. It is there. Thank you.
One, let me ask, answer this, too. One concern I have is that the committee members may not have had all of the research information. And also, we've received several emails that the committee members didn't have. So, I think it would behoove, behoove them to have the emails that we've been receiving as well as having accurate and extensive, more extensive research on the people that have been named.
Ms. Kowalski?
Ms. Roberson?
So, are we postponing this for us to come back to the board? I feel like I'm now hearing two different things, that it's going back to the committee to give them additional information. Are we postponing for our purposes? Are we postponing to send back to the committee?
Our proposal that we postponed it to
Hold on, Mr. Callan, Mr. Kelly.
My motion was to postpone it to the next board meeting.
Not Cal, but the committee of the whole.
Correct, next Board of Trustees meeting.
Action, sir.
We already have a second, so I'm gonna close discussion on the matter, please bring it to vote.
Yay.
Thank you, Ms.
And just
Dr. Temple.
procedurally, so that we're all aware, it comes back as the amended motion, just so that we're all on the same page.
Right. And the motion passes. Onto other business, the appointment of the ad hoc for policy. I have reached out and talked to members, and I'm going to appoint Mr. Kelly, Ms. Bailey, and, and Mr. Calhoun to that meeting, that committee. And that committee is to help draft up a charter for the policy and working with the committee chair. As to the appointment of the ad hoc committee for the superintendent evaluation, I would like to appoint Ms. Roberson, Dr. Temple, and Ms. McKinney to it, and that is to just draft up a evaluation for consideration of the board. Onto closing items, upcoming meetings. Our next Audit and Finance meeting will be on March 5th, 2024. The March 11th, 2024 will be a budget workshop and Committee of the Whole meeting. Is there any further discussion as to what we need to discuss with the staff as to what we really want them to focus on? I know we've, we've talked about it, but I just think it's important, Mr. Callan, can you hear me?
I hear you.
I, I know that it's, it's really critical that we look at the, the, the ESAR funding and also, as it applies to the employees and the impact study. I think those were the two biggest, you know, issues that we were looking, that we wanted to discuss at that, you know, workshop, Ms. Carlin and the superintendent. Are there any other issues anybody can figure out with that? Good, then we will move on, and then our next board meeting will be on March 25th, 2024. With that, I'd like to make a Yes, that was the March 11th, 2024 Budget Workshop and Committee of the Whole meeting.
Yes, and I will also ask if any other board member, because I'm going to send one full email to the CFO as well as to the superintendent, please send anything that you would want to see within this workshop, so we, they will not get
Absolutely, we really need to maximize our time and our interest into, you know, letting staff know so that they can prepare appropriately. I agree. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved.
All in favor?